Good evening. Roll call, Ms. Cluck.
Mr. Schneider?
Here.
Mrs. Matiger?
Here.
Mr. Shi?
Here.
Mrs. Peng?
Here.
Mrs. White?
Here.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Present.
Mr. Burrell Patel? Mr. Rivera?
Here.
Dr. Haydock?
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Opening statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business reflecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In according with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 4th and June 9th, 2022. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to a privileged session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Patel, second by Ms. Matiger. Ms. Cluck?
Whereas, Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters, attorney-client privileged discussion regarding student matters, litigation brought by former employees and students, ETEA grievances, perk, unfair labor practices, personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you, Ms. Cluck. That being said, Mr. Patel was the motion, Ms. Matiger was the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay, we'll go to privileged session, we'll be back in a little bit. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Could I have a motion to reconvene the open session?
Motion.
Motion.
Motion, Brian Rivera, second. Mohan Patel. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any nays? Thank you. Dr. Bragan, administration review of resolutions tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Board President. As you can see, the personnel agenda we just discussed in closed session, that's out for review. Under administration, we have approval of our co-curricular programs for the school year. We have our approval of our program of instruction and our school hours. If you take note on that, we're very proud of. Full day kindergarten is contained in both of those. There was a lot of effort on a lot of people on the Board of Education, administrative teaching staff, and our building level people to have that come to fruition for September. We're really excited about that. So that's going to be on the program of instruction as well as the school hours for this school year. You look at the revised school calendar, we did the calendars three years in a row. We're going to do that again this year, and we will solicit input from our PTOs, from our board members, from our collective bargaining agreements. And we did it for three years, three years ago, and we found that to be real effective. Helps people plan moving forward. We did recognize, though, on this calendar, that we neglected to include the holiday of Eid, and we contacted some local imams from Islamic societies. And the date that they suggested we should use is April 21st, even though sometimes it depends on when you can see the moon, even if that changes a little bit over the course of this year, it would be more towards Saturday if it wasn't on the Friday, so that's the date they suggested. So in doing that, it actually moves our calendar one day up. We were supposed to get out on that Friday, the 16th. June 19th is a federal holiday, as everybody knows. That's a Juneteenth celebration now, that was enacted, I believe, last year. So that would put our graduation date at June 20th, which is great because Rutgers has the availability of the, I was going to say the Rack, but I think it's the Jersey Mike's Arena now it's called. But they don't have it for any other days after that until the following week, so we're kind of tied into the adding that one day, we can't really do anything else with the calendar at this point. And we do have two snow days that are built into the calendar, so God willing, we won't need more than that. Our policies, you'll see on there for approval, those were reviewed for a first read, and the changes are highlighted there, they're crossed out if there's an omission, and then the new language is written in there after it. They were discussed at our policy committee meeting we had a few weeks ago. Approval of our curriculum guides that were updated for this school year. Approval of textbooks, I believe that's an art history textbook that we're getting approved for advanced placement course. Approval of our field trips, there's two that are coming up quickly. One is a band trip that I think is happening on Friday for Edison High School. Approval of our professional development for our staff for this month. Under pupil, special services is our added district placements, our nursing plan for the 22, 23 school year. Improvement and establishment of new programs, some people may have a question on that, that's basically some of our special needs programs. If they're new to a particular building, we have to put on for approval on our board resolution as well as get approval from the county, and those are really dictated by what the IEP needs are of our students. And our professional services, you'll see there's approval on there for Rutgers Behavioral Health Services. That's all I have, Mr. Board President.
Thank you very much. Public comments on those resolutions. Resolutions only. Oh, wait. I'm sorry. Ms. Cluck? I'm so sorry. Finance resolutions.
Thank you. So under finance, we have the approval of the minutes from July of last month. We have the board secretary report, and included in the finance resolutions, we have our transfers. It also includes the acceptance of the application for IDEA and a grant from Lyondell, and it has the results of bids from our roof upgrades for the various schools and student transportation. It also includes the services agreement with therapeutic mental health services and our capital improvement projects for John Adams and Wichita Wilson Middle Schools, as well as a revised capital improvement plan. It also includes our co-op for student transportation with the ESC NJ, and our change orders, and our regular approval payment of claims, our investment report, self-funded medical and prescription costs, bills list, and transportation report. And that concludes finance.
Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes. Ms. Matiger?
Yeah, so I just have one question, actually two questions. The first question I have is on number four, roof upgrades at various schools. I just want to understand why is this being done so late, and when will this be done, and how does this impact? Is this being done while students are in school, and how does it impact that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
I have a question on number four, the roof upgrades.
Roof upgrades on financial resolutions?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I mean typically it is done over the summer. I'm just wondering why we are doing this so late now?
Yeah, perfect. We went out to bid with those, and they came in when they came in. We didn't get DOE approval and all that, it took some time, and we had to go out for a bid. We budgeted about $2 million on there. You see the lowest bid, I think it's 1.8 off the top of my head. And then we do put alternate bids because we have many more roofs that need to be upgraded, replaced, and improved upon than we can afford every year. So we put alternate bids in there if it comes in lower to do smaller areas. And there's also an alternate bid there, I think for $185,000 or so, for a smaller section on the John P. Stevens roof. We will work around school time. If they can do it while kids are in session, we will. If they can't, they'll have to wait and either do it during holidays, or wait until we're off for break or for next summer. We had two projects that we did this year at, I think it was Washington Elementary School and Thomas Jefferson Middle School that were delayed as well in securing the bids, and they wanted to start while kids were in session, but it was too noisy when they started, so we actually put off both of those projects till this summer, which have been successfully completed.
My other question is number five, and under busing, I'm seeing that there were no bids for some routes. How does this affect the busing?
It's a great question. I had that same question myself, and I met with our new supervisor today. As everyone's aware, due to the great signs that Dr. Alderelli designed, we've been recruiting bus drivers for the last couple of months now. We're up into the mid-40s, and those are, those routes that we didn't get bids for or rejected the bids, we will do internally with our own drivers and our own routes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I just wanted to interject on those. One minute, Dr., Mr. Shi. Wanted to just add, one of the finance resolutions highlights a investment in mental health services at the elementary level. This is something new that we're doing this year, and it was done with grants. So this is not something, this is the ESAR funds. And Dr. Bragan, can you just expand on that? Because I think it's an exciting addition to the school district.
Yeah, 100%. As we know, a lot of our students and staff actually suffer some issues with the pandemic, and returning to school was difficult for many of our children, and we had some students that had some issues in coping strategies as well as dealing with and mitigating conflicts. So we did provide additional support services this year. The board was very proactive at the middle school and high school level, but we did realize there were some concerns at elementary level too. And in talking to some neighboring districts that provided this exact company service, ESS, at an elementary level, they found it to be really successful. So the ESAR's money, we have a significant amount of money we got, a lot of that we're using for HVAC upgrades and things throughout the district. Many of it we've already used during the pandemic to buy things like our thermal cameras and the things that we needed to safely return to school. There's also an amount of those funds that are dedicated to socio-emotional well-being and socio-emotional learning. So we thought this is a great use of those funds that we still had monies for, and we hope it's a real benefit to our elementary students who may be having some difficult times or struggling a bit in school. The idea is that these practitioners are purely clinicians, and they don't really have a school-based activity or thing to do, so they're really there just to support children in crises.
It's great news. Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Mr. Shi?
Yes, I have several questions here. Going along the question about Resolution 4 about the roof. So we have a base bid, and there are four alternates. So my first question is, how big is the base size? How many square footage?
In total?
Yes, just the base.
It's about 48,000 square feet with the alternate four that we selected. That's around 2,700 square feet for a total of about 50,000 square feet, a little over 51 maybe.
Okay, so what's average per square footage?
Mr. Shi, you never ask a question if you don't already know the answer.
$37.
37 and change.
Okay. There's a reason I ask this question, because...
Was it a bet with Mr. Colibus?
Yes, it was a bet with Mr. Colibus, that I said the bid is going to be $35 and more. If it's lower than 35, I owe him a coffee. Now it's 37 and more, so he owes me a coffee.
Mr. Shi, we're making a little light of it, but I think you hit on something that's endemic right now in all of our society. Any construction, any projects, the prices are escalating, and you know, we hear a lot of reasons why, whether it's supply chain demands, labor shortages, or whatever. But I don't know way around it, that's one of the reasons I think the board's committed to trying to do the overcrowding phase one as quickly as we can, so next year it'll be more, the year after it'll be even more than that, as you're well aware.
So kidding aside, the reason I also ask these questions, last week we had the ESIP vendor to come in and talk to us about the possibly upgrading the roof as a part of the entire ESIP program. So are any of the areas that we are bidding right now, is that part of the thing that they are planning to do, or this is outside?
I think these are outside that area, but when these areas are upgraded and done, and we get the 20-year warranty, they then would be viable for any type of solar, whether that was through the ESIP or we did it on our own outside of that.
Okay. So the other is about Resolution Number 7. A U.S. architect will be the one who submits the long-term facility plan for us. So my question is, does it include the phase one and a phase two that we presented to the facility committee, or just the phase one?
Typically, and I think there's a resolution, I don't have the numbers in front of me, I don't have that pulled up, but there's one for DMR as well, I believe. And they have to include the long-range facility upgrade, updates, when you're doing any construction project that you get DOE approval and you're going out to bid. So right now, those are only for phase one. When we get to the, when we're ready to move forward and pull the trigger, they will have the phase two and hopefully the phase three on there too.
Okay. So again, the following is Resolution Number 8, and we are approving USA and DMR to submit these plans to the, whatever, the education commission?
DOE.
Yes, DOE. So I remember we approved this about three, four months ago. What's the difference between this one and the one we approved before?
We neglected to include the update to the long-range facility plan.
Okay, but that's a separate resolution though. Okay. So the other thing is number 10, Resolution Number 10. We, if people look at it, we received a $40,000 credit from the spray-on roof guy, right? So the spray-on, the reason why I ask this question about the per square footage is the square, the spray-on roof guy, last year the bid was $20 per square foot, and last year the buildup was $31. So it's a third cheaper. And again, this year, we just heard, it went up to 37. So I would love us to continue to look for cheaper roofs, cheaper technologies that will actually resolve the, produce the same result but at a cheaper cost. The other thing is Resolution Number 11, and we're talking about submitting the threshold for bids and stuff like that. But I would love us to, we talked about this at the beginning of the year, and also as part of the, the policy is anything over $25,000, I would love to see that come to the budget committee, although that's, you know, the threshold calls for 44,000, but I'd like to see anything that's over 25 to come to the committee if it's possible.
Okay.
And then there are other things. So you already answered the Rack issue, but I also like to look at the, what you called, the kindergarten, what is this document? This is curriculum instruction. The kindergarten yesterday was put in like half-day, and today it was corrected, and I'm not sure the hours shown there is correct. So if you can double-check it, and just make sure that that's correct.
Okay.
Okay?
It should be the same as the elementary hours, but I'll double-check.
Yeah, so it's a little bit off the calculation there.
Okay.
Okay. Then the other thing is about this one. If you look at the curriculum instruction and thing on page 12, the eighth grade social studies, the date approval is August 2023. It cannot be. We're not there yet. So it's a typo, yeah. So I think if, this is, this is a document we're issuing to the whole district, and whoever's doing this should be a little bit more careful and double-check before they issue that to us. The other thing, looking at the curriculum guide, I just want to say, what are the changes in the elementary school social study? Because I, when I see this, it's similar to what was last year, and there was a revision about this year. I don't, I don't know what has been changed. It talked about, you know, the social, based on the curriculum committee's meeting summary, it says, "Many social study curriculum guides were revised to incorporate more in-depth resources to support the following New Jersey laws and mandates. I'm Stan, API, LGBTQI, and Americans with Disabilities." The goal is to make a curriculum guide, a living document with easily found and digestible resources to support in-depth students' learning. But when I look at what this posted, I didn't see any changes compared to last year. I'm looking at, I'm looking at middle school.
You're looking at the curriculum guide, right?
Yes, so...
I'll get you the whole curriculum.
Yeah, so if we can just, parents are concerned about some of these issues. So if we can just put a revised one, the current one, with changes, so it'll be easier for parents to see what has been changed, okay? The last question about this is, a lot of parents who has a lot of concerns about the sex education, there was a revised guideline from the state on that. So did we make any changes to the curriculum based on the new guideline? And if we made the changes, what are the changes?
Is that it?
That's it for the, for the existing resolutions, yes.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bragan?
Just thought, I think the last one, you're referring to some of the middle school curriculum, this New Jersey state learning standards related to social and sexual health for grades six and eight. And those are taken right from what the requirements are by the state, and those changes were made a year ago or two years ago to the middle school curriculum that they were included. But here's the important piece, and if anybody wants to go over the standards, I could be more than happy to read them to you. It's not always what you hear in the media or other things. But should any parent have a concern about any of that content? When your child gets health class for the marking period they're in at the middle school, you'll be provided notification on what's going to be taught during that marking period and the topics that are covered. And any of those topics that you as a parent aren't comfortable having your child participate in in school, you could opt out of that and be provided alternate setting, alternate assignment, and not be exposed to whatever that content may or may not be. So if parents do have concerns, I really encourage them to talk to their building principals. If they don't, meet with satisfaction with that. Talk to, email me, reach out to us directly. We don't want any children or any parents feeling uncomfortable about any of the state mandates that we have to implement in our classrooms and in our curriculum, and if it's something that isn't aligned to what their familiar teachings are at home or what they want to go over, their children have the option to opt out, and we will support that. On a larger issue, if they really want the changes in what are the New Jersey state learning standards and the standards in the legislation, that's a legislative issue. That's not a school board issue. So be active in that and put your voices out there and try to make a change. We, as a school system, me as a superintendent, we have to adhere to the guidance and the standards that are set forth by the legislature as well as the New Jersey Department of Education. But I do think this board, and I know our administrative team, want to support our families as much as we can, and if people feel uncomfortable for whatever reason, we will provide an alternate assignment and do our best to make every child feel acclimated and comfortable in the school setting.
Okay. I also like to introduce a resolution, if I may. So before I do that, so I just have a question for Board President. Last meeting, we approved a bond council, Willens as our bond council. So my question to Board President, what is a criteria to choose a bond council?
There's, there's a lot of criteria, obviously. You've done this before. You have to almost guess what number you're going to be at? Why did we approve, why did we even need the bond council approved, Mr. Shi? You know that answer, right?
Yep.
For the ESIP.
Mm-hmm.
So...
And some other stuff.
So we had that three-hour meeting the other day, and we had to decide how much ESIP, what they call ECMs, which is an energy, what do you, what's ECM stand for? Do you know? A cost measure, I think.
Energy conservation measure.
Conservation measure. So we have to figure out how many ECMs we're going to use. Depending on how many ECMs we agree upon and we move forward with DCO Energy, then we're going to have to borrow money, and that's why the bond council was important. Dr. Bragan and Ms. Cluck are acting business administrator. They accepted the bids. This was under cooperation, I believe, with DCO Energy and our architect. You could probably speak further to the process?
Well, you know, every, people on the board are aware, it was a formal request for proposal process, and you know, the, it had particulars in there that where you're supposed to put in for it. The problem is, I think, as the board president said, we don't know the exact money we would look to finance or what the numbers are, and the fees change according to what those numbers would be. So if you looked at a lower number, in some instances, the firm we did appoint, Willens, Goldman, and Spitzer are cheaper than the two other firms. If you look at a higher number, meaning a higher number bond, they're a little bit more expensive. I think to the tune of maybe $7,700 or so. But really, whenever you choose any professional services, including like our board attorney or our auditors or our architects, the bottom-line dollar isn't usually the deciding factor. It's the professional expertise, it's the familiarity working with such professional organizations. And when the ESIP came up, we selected a company, DCO. We selected an architect, DMR, and they're comfortable working with, it used to be Lisa Gorab, who unfortunately passed away, and the other, her partner at Willens, I forget his name, Tony, I forget the last name. They're familiar with working with them, and they thought it would be a nice relationship, and it was appropriate. So they asked us if we could move forward with them, and we thought it was appropriate. But if the committee wants to take another look at it, I'm not adverse to anything. We haven't done anything yet.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, Mr. Shi, I hesitated when you asked the question because I'm wondering, are we allowed to talk about the actual cost?
Absolutely.
Of each one in public?
Yes, absolutely, because that's a...
I'm asking our board attorney. Yeah?
It's openable document.
If the bids are in, you can discuss the cost, but if you're going to discuss, do any type of a negotiation or an analysis, that is not an open session.
Well, we have, in general terms then, we don't need this bond council until we settle on how many ECMs we're using with the ESIP program. It's not something we're paying a bill tomorrow for. This is in preparation for our ESIP program, which I believe you were instrumental in bringing to the district, right, Mr. Shi?
Yes.
So if you want, so if you're proposing a resolution where you'd like to dig further into the bond council, I have no problem with that.
All right, so...
Is that what you'd like to do?
Well, let me, you know, I understand that we don't need the bond council as of yet, because we need to get the finance in shape. We have a financial planner that, Acacia, and that's more important before she works out, then we go to bond council. So my question is, you know, are you aware that there were three RFPs before the vote last, last meeting?
Of course.
Okay.
We all were, we were...
I was not. I was not. I don't think, you know, I don't think Bureau was, otherwise Bureau would not made those comments about these proposals coming to the whole board before the committee. So my question is, you know, we all know that for professional contract, we don't have to go with the lowest proposal. So my question is, is Willens the lowest RFP?
I think Dr. Bragan just told you there was a $7,000 difference.
Okay. So...
Board President.
Yes, Mr., excuse me. Mr. Shi, I think Mr. Patel wants to interject.
Yes, so... Let me finish my question. So is there a reason not to choose the lowest proposal? Because to me, both Willens and this firm, I forgot its name, a long name, they both worked in our district, both of them, in the past. And last time, when Willens was chosen, because Willens was giving us a proposal of 55 or something, and the other firm, the current firm that we did not choose, was giving us a proposal of 80. So this time, they reversed it. It was 52 and a half to 44 and seven. So it's about $8,000 difference with the two proposals. So the resolution I would like to introduce is to rescind the decisions that we made at the last meeting, appointing Willens, and let's appoint this new, the other firm at, you know, that's a little bit cheaper, $8,000 cheaper.
I second that resolution change. And Board President, I have a question.
I mean, excuse me.
Yeah.
Mr. Patel, Bureau Patel.
Okay, so, yes, the, it's, last meeting, certainly Dr. Bragan, I asked you that, why don't we bring these things to the finance committee? After that, I sat down with you, Dr. Bragan, and we went over this. You explained me all this, and we went over all this RFPs. And thereafter, we had the budget planning and oversight, financial facilities committee meeting, in which we reviewed the ECM measures and everything in detail. The decision, which I'm going to read out shortly during the committee minutes, was that we are keeping on hold right now of everything that DCO Energy proposed to us right now. We're not doing anything right now, right? Now, as Board President said, this thing is for our future work, which will come at some point, we are very likely anticipating it. But before even we go there, we have yet to review the ECM measures and the solar, two major components. All those things will be again the part of my committee minutes. I understand the concern completely about the dollar amount and what about, but what I think right now is, all these things are connected to ECM. It's not connected to the infrastructure plan or anything. So what if we review that in the committee? So what if we review that in the committee meeting, upcoming committee meeting, if we have to? And what are the, because if we discuss the dollar amounts right now, it will be all night long. So we, because I do intend to set up a committee meeting very soon because we have to go over the ECM measures. So we can always review over there. If, if there is a need to do any resolution, we can always bring it up if we need to. But we can put this as a part of that committee.
So I agree with you, Mr. Patel. Mr. Shi, let me ask you something. You, you saw the RFP results.
Yes.
What was the number based on?
That's number based on the.
No, the, the loan amount that, that it was based on.
50 million dollars.
50 million?
Yes.
What was the total amount of the ESIP with the ECMs we looked at during our meeting?
22 million.
At 22 million?
Yes.
Willens is cheaper.
It's a thousand.
At 50 million, there's a $7,000 difference.
It's a $1,000 difference.
So it's not a $7,000 or $8,000 difference?
Well, yeah, yeah, but, but let's, let's talk about, when you bought the bond council, you're talking about phase one construction. That's a JP Stevens and all the others, right? So that's, is in, it's close to about 50 million dollars.
Well, I mean, but that's not.
The way you, when we put a bond council, we're not just only going to do the ESIP. We're just going to do the construction of JP Stevens, the, the, the first, first phase of the construction.
But just to be clear, for, for anyone watching, that has not been voted on by.
Difference, 1,000.
Board President?
What, what's 1,000 dollar difference?
The, if you, if it's, if you look at the details on the two bids, it's, it's only a $1,000 difference between the two.
I know this is shocking because you brought it up thinking I would fight with you. I was agreeable. If you want to shelve this and you want to look at all the bond councils, I don't think it's appropriate to say, well, let's hire the other one because I don't think the board has had fair opportunity to look at the other bond council. However, I am happy to agree with you.
All right, so let's.
You would like to look at it?
Let's rescind the decision.
I just want to, I just want to say that this, the ESIP program, which I know you're a fan of, this could potentially slow it down. So to save the $1,000 in your words, you could be slowing down a $22 million project.
Well, you know, we have not done nothing yet because the financial, the financial planner has not done anything yet. Before they actually do it, then we go to bond council, right? We have not decided how we're going to do with the ESIP before we introduce the finance guy. So I don't think it's going to delay. So we already approved the Willens at a higher rate, okay? So I would like to rescind the, the decision. If you want to hold with whatever the, the other vendors, it's fine. But I like to rescind the decision.
That's, I, I agree with you. So if we rescind the hiring of Willens, but then we look at it between now and.
September.
The next meeting and we hire a bond council after the committee reviews it and we make a recommendation to the board. Is that fair?
Yeah.
I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just to be clear.
Board President?
Does any other board member have a comment about that? Yes?
Do we, Attorney, do we need to have? Do we have a, do we need to have a call to put this on the agenda?
Excuse me, no, what you have is a motion and a second, so we need to do an amendment to the current motion.
Before, before we vote on the motion, I want to just state one thing. Regarding the bond council, we had chosen that council before and the problem.
When?
When, back in, when we were doing a referendum.
When was that?
And what happened was, they were tainted by our opposition that's sitting right next to you.
So when you say we, you weren't on the board then, right?
No, I wasn't, but.
No, neither was, neither was I.
Neither were you.
So I don't know what happened.
The person that was running at that time was using that council as a point.
I don't think either, I don't think either one of us could speak to that.
The problem is that, you know what, you already tainted that council by the football that they played that time for political gains. So what I don't want to do is, I don't want to hire somebody that's going to be basically the same thing that's going to happen again and use as a football again.
I'd like to keep the politics out of building things for our schoolchildren. It sounds like you're bringing things up.
No, we're keeping students first.
From a long time ago.
Students first is what we're trying to do. And we want to make sure that the politics that were used last time is not used again. So we can build the things that we need to build.
I just agreed with Mr. Shi in your bringing up politics. Mr. Patel, did you have something to say?
So Board President, yes. So, so here's the thing, speaking of, to that. We, we recently had a three-hour finance committee meeting, three hours.
Three.
And the whole three hours was completely meeting each other. There was no other discussion in the three hours. And all the committee members at length discussed about the EC project, the energy conservation measures, how the finance flows in, and what can we all do best for the district, right? Now, a lot of numbers were discussed. And it's going to come in the committee board, but since this discussion came up, I thought I should say. One of the things Dr. Bragan himself recommended was, a lot of these things needs a careful review because we can do this ourselves, right? And when we looked at the numbers presented by the vendor, which shows clearly a lot of money which is being spent, which goes to the vendors, whereas if we do it ourselves, it was a money well saved for the district. That does not mean that we just give it to the vendors or we do it ourselves, but we need to review that. So all these things, if, now there are two, two different things going on over here. One is the infrastructure plan and one is the ECM plan. So if, if something is needed to be done with the ECM, we would certainly review it in the committee and make the right decision when we get there. But Board President, I don't know if we really want to rescind anything today. We can wait till next month as well because we still have the committee meetings, right? But I will leave it up to you.
Well, we're not using a bond council between now and September 20th or whatever. When's our next meeting? The 20th. So, I mean, but, I mean, I'm happy to, to, I mean, what are, what are the other board members thinking? Ms. Mattiker?
So I would feel that, you know, since no action is being taken between now and September, why doesn't the budget committee go sit, discuss this at length and figure what's the, you know, best step forward and bring us the proposal and we'll act on it, whether it's rescinding the earlier offer or whether it is doing something else? Why don't you guys sit and figure this out?
If we rescind it, do we have to go back out to an RFP or can we use the same RFP proposal?
You can use, you can use the same.
That's good news, okay. Any other comments?
So, any, so what, is this on the agenda right now or?
I mean, you, you made the motion and Mr. Patel seconded. I, I prefer to work this out in committee. That, you're on the committee.
Yes.
So it would be appropriate to, now, if you'd like to rescind this and we wind up rehiring Willens in a month.
That's fine.
That's fine, but.
I, you know, right now, we're not using them, let's just rescind them.
I have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
Does anybody have a problem?
So what's, so just, I have a question. So what are the pros and cons to the attorney? If we rescind it now and appoint Willens in a month? Or if we rescind it, don't rescind it and change the bond council at the next meeting? Like, what are the pros and the cons?
From everything that I've heard, just listening, because I haven't worked with this before, is you can do either, so long as you don't issue a purchase order because nobody does, no contractor does work without a purchase order being issued. That's just from a generic perspective. If you wanted to rescind it and send it back to committee, then you can do that too.
Yeah, so to answer that, not from a legal opinion perspective, but if the committee doesn't meet, if all of us just don't meet, then next month we'll be in the same situation. So if we rescind it today, it's very important that we all meet soon and talk about this. That's, that's the pros and cons right now.
Which you will meet, right, so.
Ms. Pang?
No, I'm, I, there is a resolution, there is a second, so I, I think we should vote, vote on it.
Okay.
And save some time.
Yeah, so you have to clarify your resolution proposal.
The resolution is rescind the appointment of Willens as our bond council.
So you'd like to not have a bond council for the next month?
Yes, because we're not using them anyway.
Okay, we weren't going to use them anyway. Is somebody going to second that?
I second that already.
Mr. Patel seconds. Roll call.
Dr. Haydock?
No.
Mr. Rivera?
No.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
No.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes, to rescind.
Mrs. White?
I'm going to say yes, because I think we should bring it back to the committee to be reviewed. There's just too many questions right now, so my answer is yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes, because I do not understand why the lowest bid is not chosen.
Mr. Shi?
Yes, to rescind.
Mrs. Mattiker?
I would say no, because even with a no, it can still go back to the committee and be discussed and a new resolution can be brought up next time.
And Mr. Schneider?
No.
We have four yays and five nays. The motion is not carried.
I'm going to make a comment before we move along.
Mr. President, can I comment?
Mr. Patel is committee chair of the Budget Oversight Committee. I request that you put on the agenda.
Absolutely, that's the intent here.
That we do discuss this at length.
Absolutely.
So just because we just voted no doesn't mean that this issue's.
No, 100% this.
And, and Mr. Shi, we will discuss it.
It's a valid concern about the dollar amount and we are accountable to each and every cent of the taxpayers. And the next committee meeting, we must discuss this. And if need be, we'll bring it up in the next board meeting.
Mr. Rivera?
I just wanted to say I agree with what was just stated. That's what I was going to state. You know, Mr. Shi does have some concerns, so I think we should hear it. So if we could bring it back to the Budget Committee, I would appreciate that as well.
Okay. Very good. Any other board member comments before we go to public comment? Ms. Pang?
Yes, yes, I do like to bring up another resolution because I know that New Jersey has passed a new sex education standard, which is not just middle school, it's actually coming to elementary school, starting second grade. And they have a very specific requirement for second grade, second, and fifth grade sex education. And as a parent, I, I cannot agree with that new standard. I think, especially for the younger kids, for the elementary school kids. So I'd like the board to send a letter to the Department of Education to reconsider this new standard that's going to be pushed into, into our elementary school. So that's the resolution I'd like to bring up.
So the, so the resolution is for the board to send a letter to Department Ed to reconsider the sex education for the younger, for the, for students, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, with that said, I second that motion.
So a comment on that, Board President?
Are we going to look at the letter or write the letter before we vote on whether we send it or not?
Well, let's, let's, you know, we, we, I think last.
It sounds like it's, this is a political thing that you want to just make a point.
No, no, it's not, it's not, it's not. I, I firmly believe the way that I brought up and the culture that I brought up, that, that, you know, to have a education for very, very young students, it's inappropriate. It's, I believe it. It had nothing to do with politics. If people want to put in politics, it's fine. What we are saying, a lot of district is doing this, to send a letter from the district to ask the Department of Education to reconsider the curriculum. A lot of district has done that. Let me finish, excuse me. And, you know, we have done this before when we asked them to consider, I think during the COVID, we sent a letter to the Department of Education to ask them to reconsider. I think it was the, about.
Option for online instruction.
Oh, yeah, online instruction. It's the same kind of a thing that I like to see that we, as a board, put a position in this.
So I have, I have a comment to make.
Ms. Mattiker?
So I, I also had my own concerns and I did check with, I was not, I did not attend the last curriculum committee meeting, but I did check with, you know, what was the new that was introduced. And I was told that we have not approved anything sex education related from grades K to five this year. I was also told that anything which is even slightly controversial is only being introduced in eighth grade. And also, when that comes in an eighth grade, that comes with a letter for parents, which they can use to opt out their kids. So my question on this resolution is, are you talking about New Jersey or are you talking about Edison? Because.
I'm talking about New Jersey.
Okay.
The state. I said to, I said as a state of education.
Okay, yeah, so just to clarify, in Edison, no such thing is happening, but for, I just wanted that clarification.
And it's, it's a new standard, so I think Edison would have to deal with it either way. And it's not just eighth grade. It's, I don't want to go to the specific, but it's very, if you check online, it's very specific. They have a very specific requirement for second grade and fifth grade.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Patel.
So Dr. Bragan, why don't you share some thoughts on what's happening in this area? Because we do get questions from a lot of residents every day about this. And I believe we are not doing this in Edison, but if you can share some more light.
Sure. If you look at, and I'm not defending either way. I think the legislators legislate, they make requirements. And New Jersey learning standards are what they are. Comprehensive health and education standards were adopted in 2020. And there is a category called social and sexual health. I'm going to read to you what it says for, by the end of grade two. Every individual has unique skills and qualities, which can include the activities they enjoy, such as how they may dress, their mannerisms, things they like to do. Families shape the way we think about our bodies, our health and our behaviors. People have relationships with others in the local community and beyond. Communication is the basis for strengthening relationships and resolving conflict between people. Conflicts between people occur and there are effective ways to resolve them. By the end of grade two, the expectation is that second graders will have an understanding of that. I'm a father of three daughters, one's 23, 21 and 19. I personally don't see anything offensive with that. That's Bernie Bragan's position. I'm not telling anybody else what they should do. By the end of grade five, same standard. Again, from the state, New Jersey State Learning Standards, social and sexual health. By the end of grade five, all individuals should feel welcome and included, regardless of their gender, gender expression or sexual orientation. Family members impact the development of their children physically, socially and emotionally. People in healthy relationships share thoughts and feelings as well as mutual respect. Again, a dad of three daughters, I see, I personally see nothing offensive with that. I'm just sharing my opinion. Same thing, social, sexual health by the end of grade eight. Inclusive schools and communities are accepting of all people and make them feel welcome and included. Relationships are influenced by a wide variety of factors, individuals and behaviors. These are factors that contribute to making healthy decisions about sex. Again, I don't see anything offensive about that. By the end of grade 12, how individuals feel about themselves, their identity and sexual orientation can be positively or negatively impacted by a wide variety of factors. Healthy individuals establish and maintain healthy relationships by utilizing positive communication, social skills and, and social skills to interact effectively with others. There are many factors that influence how people feel about ourselves and decisions we make. There are state and federal laws which provide access to sexual healthcare services for minors and to protect minors from unhealthy sexual situations. Those are the overarching standards and principles. If you ask me today as a school superintendent, are any of them personally offensive to me? The answer is no. Our curriculums have to go by these overarching standards. That's what they have done and this is not new. 2020, 2020. So listen, I hear the uproar, I understand people's concerns and here's, here's the district's policy. By the way, the curriculum guys are all online, so you can look these over and find out which standards they reference and look them up. But this is online as well. Every parent has access to it and can opt out. If you want to opt out, opt out. We have the topics identified and delineated. If the parents don't want their child to participate in that, for whatever reason, you're a parent, you're a child. Just do it. You have the option to do that. Now, some people have said to me, well, Bernie, why wouldn't they set it up where you have to opt in to talk about that? Okay, I get that too, but that's not what the law is. We are a country of law. I can't violate it. If you guys want to have a resolution or somebody wants to petition the legislators, hey, that's the democratic process. I'm all for it.
Dr. Bragan, just a quick question.
Mr. Patel.
For, is it for fifth graders to, an opt-out option as well? Or is that something that is a standard that we are actually allowing?
It, it hasn't been, as far as I'm aware, because it hasn't been an issue. But if there's a fifth grade parent that wants to opt out or something, yeah. We used to have the Growing Up Program when I was an elementary principal. I think we do it in fourth grade now. It's the same thing. It's more learning about your body and your changes because some of our children are maturing at that age. When it used to be, when I was a kid, 13, 14, you know, it's younger now, for whatever reasons, I don't know that. But parents that weren't comfortable having that conversation with the school nurse or in the school during a health class, they opted out and they could always, always do that.
But Dr. Bragan, we're, I, I understand, our school are now sending.
But Dr. Bragan, I understand our school are now sending letters to doc, to fifth grade parents, so how could they know to opt out?
That's a good question. I don't know that the letters go out because they don't have specific, specifically delineated that this is your marking period for health, right? So maybe we need to make sure that's known and publicize that if there's an issue. But the curriculum guides, they are on the website if there's any concerns.
When did, Dr. Bragan, when did the, excuse me...
The thing you read was 2020, right?
Dr. Bragan, when did the fifth grade curriculum change?
There is a new standard passed in 2022, right?
I think Baninder is raising her hand. What did you say? Two years ago.
So, so Ms. Peng, you were the chair of the Curriculum Committee two years ago? Were you?
Two years ago.
Yes. When this changed, when the sex ed curriculum in fifth grade, when it changed, were you the chair?
No.
No, I was not.
Oh, I'm sorry. So somebody, I wasn't on the board. So I'm asking, at that point, was there any kind of...
What happened two years ago has nothing to do with now, right? We're talking about the standard introduced 2022, not 2020.
No, the fifth, I think it changed in 2020.
Standards are from 2020.
No, there's a new standard passed this year, right? Not 2020. I don't understand why we're talking 2020. There's new standard introduced 2022.
No.
Doug, I, can I speak? So I think we should, we should wait for the Curriculum Committee minutes, because I think Brian has his minutes where he specifies what changes have been made this particular year. And I read through the curriculum minutes which were emailed, and those minutes basically said that at elementary level, there is no change, there is no sex ed new that's coming in. There's nothing in sixth grade, there is nothing in seventh grade. The only grade that is coming in is eighth grade, and it, and I think the minutes also say that when it comes in in eighth grade, the parents will also get an opt-out form. I think it's important, Dr. Bragan, that at any grade, grade one, two, three, four, anything even minor, health-related, which could potentially be a concern, I think an email should go out to parents, letting them know what the kid is being taught, and the process to opt out.
I think that's very fair.
I think that's totally fair, and I think what I'm hearing, and I could be wrong, is that maybe if we put out all the updated and accurate information and let people make an informed decision, that's the best way to do it. So if we're feeling that our parents haven't been part of that process or don't have the information, we'll get it to them. It's easy.
Again, sorry, Board President, can I?
Mr. Shi.
Okay. So, the letter is to ask the, the Department of Education to reconsider, right? So if after the reconsideration, they felt, oh, whatever they kept is correct, they should keep it. That's, that's fine.
Re, excuse me, just reconsider what?
Reconsider the curriculum right now that was approved for 2022 about sex education. That's all.
I'm not sure we have all the correct information as to what was passed this year versus what was passed in 2020.
A lot of, excuse me...
Mr. President, the Curriculum Committee should have the current standard, the new standard that was passed, right?
Oh, we do. It's published on our website, but it seems like, there seems to be people saying that something changed this year.
Yes.
Which doesn't seem to be agreeable with the elementary...
So does that mean our elementary school are now following the state standard?
I don't, I think you're asking me a question that's, there's nothing...
Answered by the Curriculum Committee, maybe?
The only...
I think Dr. Bragan, as our chief, you know, academic lead, can answer that.
I think there's something that, as a couple of people said, when Mr. Rivera reads the Curriculum Committee minutes, it might clarify some of the concerns. Regarding social and sexual health as one of the New Jersey State Student Learning Standards, it's under the Comprehensive Health and Education Standard. That hasn't changed. That was updated in 2020. That didn't change this year. There was a change to include some other information about LGBTT communities in social studies curriculum and literature that we use to highlight some of the things that people of those persuasions did. And I think that was what was gonna be covered under the Curriculum Committee.
So, just to end this, and I'll talk about it during the curriculum meeting, but when it came to phys ed and health, it was only sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade were the only ones that were discussed. And all the controversy issues are in the eighth grade. And if parents don't feel comfortable with their students participating in those lessons, then there was gonna be an alternative assignment for them to do. But those were the only topics that were discussed, sixth, seventh, and eighth.
It's, Mr. President, one question.
Dr. Hada.
It's, it's very difficult to write a letter to a building principal or opt out of this, this standard, because most of these topics are integrated within not just health, but science and social studies, and sometimes math, sometimes in a guidance office. So I'm concerned of what a parent's right would be on that, to write a letter. It's almost difficult for that teacher to stop instruction to remove those students that the parents don't feel comfortable. I understand the concern as a parent myself, but I can't see how this could actually be written in a way that would be comparable to a student in a second or a fifth grade classroom. That's what I'm trying to understand with this dialogue on the board.
Yeah, so, Board President?
Mr. Shi.
So the, as, you know, Kevin said, that the, a lot of the contents is integrated, it's not only in the phys ed, it's in the social studies, it's in the, even the basic math curriculum. So that's why, you know, some other district has done that and just sent a letter to the Department Ed and tell them to reconsider, you know, this overall sex education.
But I understand from the earlier dialogue that I believe some of the members would like the parents to have the right to opt out of some of these second and fifth grade topics. I don't know how that would be possible if they're integrated within the school day. I don't, I couldn't agree to that, because I don't understand how that would actually occur.
Yeah, so if integrated with math, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, so if a teacher, if the topic comes up and they're talking about being individualized and being respectful of each other, there's laws that prevent children from harassing, intimidating, or bullying somebody for certain characteristics. So it's covered in that way, but to ask a parent to opt out of that discussion of what Dr. Bragan just read, it's almost impossible. I can understand it up in eighth grade up to high school, which Mr. Rivera will be discussing in his curriculum report, how a parent would not feel the right to have the sexual content discussed to their child, and I probably would raise my hand for that too. But I don't understand how that would incorporate in elementary environment.
I think...
Ms. Matiker?
I think it's very important to first understand what is exactly being taught before we, you know, go further on this discussion. So I'd appreciate if, you know, Baninder and Gail could kind of inform the board, let us know what exactly is being taught, because maybe, you know, we are also not aware exactly what's going on in all these grades. And then let's discuss this and figure this out. And what's the best way to let parents make decisions for their children, the one who don't want children to be exposed to these topics? So, so let's just, you know, do it step by step and figure out what's really going on here.
I, I think a theme that I'm hearing from the whole board is that we wanna make it convenient for people to opt out. If they wanna opt out, they should easily be able to opt out. It shouldn't be a difficult roadblock for the parent, correct?
But, but, Mr. President, a lot of times, the, the letter, I do not know how diff, how specific the letter goes to the parent could be.
Would it, would it describe all the details, that what exactly gonna be taught in those classes? I, I don't know. I doubt it. I doubt it was, would list all the things in specific that's gonna be taught. And I don't know if, you know, parents are gonna read those letters carefully. And I, I think it's the board members' responsibility. Yeah, I agree, this is important, we should know this. But I'm surprised that a lot of board members are not aware of this new change, actually. Yeah, it's important we should know, but it's kind of late.
I think, I think that's something we should learn about as a board from our academic leads, is what exactly changed, because I'm, I'm, right now, I sit here confused as to what changed. So I wanna make sure that I'm aware of it before. I mean, obviously, I'm in favor of sending a letter to protect our children. And if parents wanna opt out, they should be able to opt out.
Mr. President, is anything changed? Has anything changed since 2020?
According to...
What's changed, I think, is what, what some people are hearing is that the, no, the standards haven't changed from 2020. Districts had until 2022 to implement all the standards. There's been no change.
And we are not implementing, that's what you're saying, or we are doing opt-out on that, on whatever changed? Even I am not well versed with what changed, but we are doing an opt-out?
Well, we have, we have a process in place now for students at the middle school, and they enter into the health marking period in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. They get a notification that says, "We're gonna be talking about these things," and I have it right here. "We're talking about personal growth and development, emotional health, social and sexual health, personal safety, health conditions, disease and medicines, alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs." If at some point you wanna opt out to any, one, all of those, whatever, you find...
Right, but what about elementary? That's the question I kind of get from people.
Well, we don't, I haven't really had that experience at elementary, but I understand the concern. I think it's something we'll look at and get that information for the board first, and then see where we go.
Okay, so come two weeks from now, this is not happening, right? It's not starting in our school, two weeks from now, when the school starts.
What's not happening?
This whole sex ed education and health education.
Well, it's social and sexual health, it's a standard, a learning standard from the state. Yeah, it is happening. It's, it's part of the requirements. So there are, there are students that will be in health in the first marking period that'll get the notification in sixth, seventh, and eighth, and if the parents wanna opt out, they have the ability to do that.
Yeah, sixth, seventh, and eighth. But what about elementary school?
In elementary school, the standards are what they are, and they're embedded in the, in the health curriculum for grades two and five at the end, as I said. If a, if a parent wants to opt out of anything related to social and sexual health, contact their teacher and we'll go there.
Okay, so district plans to send out that communication for opt-out?
Um, yes. We can, for elementary, I don't know that we've typically done that. We, like I said, my familiarity was with the Growing Up Program, which was a special program that was separate. It was taught by the nurse for a week or so, whatever that was. And parents had the option to opt out if they didn't want. The normal health, science classes at elementary, we'll have to look at and revisit that and put something together.
How do parents know about it?
Can I say something?
Good.
How do parents, I don't, I don't know what you're asking, know about?
How do parents know about when to opt out and...
Well, that's the thing. I guess we never know what's controversial, right? So the curriculum guides and all that are on our website. They could look it over. I think most of our teachers are very sensitive and wouldn't ask, wouldn't, wouldn't be instructing or teaching children something that they would feel themselves would be uncomfortable for them to do. And in grades one, two, three, four, or five, I don't see that happening on a regular basis when I'm in the classrooms. If it's an issue, we'll deal with it. We'll put something together and make sure people are aware. If the parents aren't comfortable, they have an opportunity to opt out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Ms. Matiker?
I just wanted to reiterate that, let's just go back, look at the information, share it with everyone, share it with parents, and let them know what the process for opting out. And then I think everybody will be happy then. And also for the Growing Up Program, I have two daughters, and I know that for the Growing Up Program, we would get a letter home, and the parents also had an option to actually see the whole curriculum, like go into the school and actually watch whatever the children were watching, and then opt out if they wanted to. So just pay attention to your emails, and, and hopefully, you know, it's all gonna be good.
So you're expecting the elementary school parent and middle school parents to go on the school's website, figure out this curriculum, and choose to opt out or not?
That's not what I said. I said, if you heard me...
I've seen those eighth grade letters, and they're not very specific.
Yeah, so what I'm saying is that first, the most important thing is information. Everybody needs to know what is exactly being taught. Because right now, you know, there's too many things going on. Some districts have this, some other districts have something else. So I think the first thing to do is figure out what is happening in each of the grades, okay? Once you figure that out, I think it's important to share that information with parents, and also share the information via email, that this is what is being taught. If you wanna opt out, this is the process to opt out, and that's it. I'm not saying that parents go on the website and start navigating and start looking at what, because, you know, sometimes you look at those broad topics and you're not sure what exactly it is. So let the experts do it for them, and then, you know, in a very clear way, kind of communicate that message.
Board President?
Mr. Shi.
There are, there are two issues here. One is, you know, we need to follow the standards. That's what the standard is. So by the law, we have to follow the standards. The second issue is, we gotta ask our board members, we gotta ask ourselves, are you concerned about the direction it's going? Are you concerned about the sex education? So as far as, you know, me, the way that I was brought up, I am concerned. Again, I'm gonna repeat, this has nothing to do with politics, okay? I, I don't know why it was, you know, categorized like that by my board president. It is unfortunate. So the question our board member has to ask ourselves is, is that a concern? If that is a concern to you, then we should send a letter, tell them to reconsider. Again, they can say, "Hey, this is, this is fine. There's nothing wrong." Or they'll say, "Hey, maybe this is a little bit too much," you know? And if you look at, even the governor had a conversation with the Department of Education, asked them to reconsider this. Okay? And we have senators on the state asking the Department of Education to reconsider this. So sending a letter, ask them to reconsider, has nothing to do with opt-out and everything else. Opt-out is what we are doing right now, and we need to give parents a choice. And the other thing is next step, you know, what is coming down the future, and that letter is for the future. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shi. Any other comments?
Yes, Board President.
I'd like to get to the public.
Me too, but one quick question in regards to policy. For 2432, page one of two, if you take a look at the policy that we're abolishing for school-sponsored publications, do we have anything in replacement of that? Because what we're doing is, we're actually saying that the school pub, sponsored publications, which has all these restrictions of what can and cannot be, you know, presented in that publication, is being abolished. Do we have anything in replacement of this, or is it something that is coming in from the state for revisal, and if that's so, if Hope could answer that as well as Dr. Bragan?
I could definitely answer it. Yeah, we do. It's policy 5722. It's under student journalism, which is a new mandated policy. It takes the place of the other policy that we're getting rid of. And those requirements for student publications and things, those are, have been determined by Supreme Court cases. So, you know, students don't give up their rights for freedom of expression when they enter the thresholds of our school doors. So there, that was, the reason it was abolished is a new state mandated policy on student journalism that supersedes those others.
But it still has the same protections as the one that's on the abolished one, in regards to all the restrictions?
It's actually more, I think.
More? Perfect. Thank you.
Board President?
Mr. Shi.
So we have a motion to send a letter to the Department of Education. So attorney, what, what is the, you have a motion in a second?
Second.
We have a second? You already have a second?
Can I ask a couple of questions, Mr. Shi, with this resolution? Who's writing the letter?
Superintendent and attorney.
The superintendent and the attorney?
Yes.
Can we have them, I think that's fair. So would we be able to have them write the letter and then we can vote if we're gonna send it?
Well, let's, let's vote to let them send a letter first. Let them have this issue first.
Well, send a letter and write a letter to do the thing.
Are we, are we agreeing? Because there is a lot of discussion over here. The people are not agreeing with doing this. So is the board in a position, wanna do this or not? So that's what the resolution is.
I don't, I, I, so you would like to vote on a letter that hasn't been written yet that we should send?
We want to vote, the board to send a letter to the Department of Education. That's what the resolution on the table.
So I just wanna add that first, we need to understand...
What are the contents of the letter? That's, that's the next, next vote.
Can I please finish?
I did not finish. You interrupted. I'm sorry.
No, you had finished.
I did not.
Okay, finish. Finish. What did you have to say?
That's, that's what I wanna say, right? Right now, there's, excuse me, there's a resolution on the table. There's a first and a second. So by the book, we gotta have a vote on it.
I understood, excuse me, Ms. Matiker, the problem, Mr. Shi, is that you haven't detailed in the resolution what we're voting on. So I'm in favor of you introducing a resolution to vote on.
We're introducing a resolution to write a letter to Department of Education, ask the Department of Education to reconsider sex education in the elementary school.
Thank you. Ms. Matiker?
So I don't think anybody disagrees with you, Mr. Shi. But we need to know what exactly is being taught, or what exactly has been decided by the state for the elementary sex education, okay? So once we have that information, then let's prepare a resolution and then send that resolution. I mean, right now, excuse me... I mean, right now, excuse me, I'm talking right now. Thank you. So right now, when you don't even know exactly what, because see, this year, in 2022, we've not approved anything for elementary K-25 regarding sex education. There's nothing being approved for sixth or seventh grade, which covers this topic. There is something that is there for eighth grade. So when we don't even know what's there, like what do you write in that resolution? So let's figure out what is there and then be very concrete, be very clear, and be very direct. And, excuse me.
Go ahead.
So I don't know why we are going on and on. Everybody is agreeing that people, parents, need to have a choice. But then they also need to have the information to make that choice. So from that perspective, like I spoke earlier, let the experts, the curriculum experts here, give the board exactly what is being taught so that in the September meeting, we can have a very well-written resolution, which we can send to the state and get it done. Let's not rush it. I mean, it's just a matter of, when is the next meeting? It's a matter of a month.
September 15th.
September 15th. What is the date today? It's like literally 20 days. So let's do this in 20 days, in a more informed way.
Mr. Rivera.
Mr. Vice President, you can spend all the time-
Mr. Rivera.
Well, I find the whole conversation interesting because it's basically what our opinions are in regards to this, rather than what our constituents are that we service. So you may have an opinion, you may have an opinion, I have my opinion. We shouldn't be voting on the nine guys' opinions up here. If anything, we should be surveying the parents in our community and ask them how they feel about this. It shouldn't be about-
That, Board President, if I could mean-
It shouldn't be about what we feel. Remember, we were representing the public.
Hundred percent.
The other thing is, I actually, and I wanted to talk about this before my computer dies, I only got 13%. But I'm just reviewing some of these concepts. And like the essential questions are, what are the rules in my family? What are my family's values? What makes a family healthy? How does families cope with experiencing changing family dynamics? You know, some of these essential questions or some of these primary teaching resources, they might not, some parents might not agree to them. But some parents might. So I think the way to go is that to provide our parents, you know, with the access to looking at the curriculums, if it's difficult for them, maybe send a mass email of it, because basically it's three pages. And people could review the essential questions, they could review the primary teaching resources, the content and academic vocabulary. And if families don't feel comfortable with that, then give them the option to opt out. But I have a problem up here as nine individuals trying to make a choice based on what my beliefs are versus what the beliefs of the people that we're servicing.
I couldn't agree more, Mr. Rivera. Ms. Peng.
Yeah, so for eighth graders, we're going to send, how do we notify the parents? You guys have a meeting, right? So the curriculum meeting, have you decided, how do we notify the parents to let them have a choice to opt out?
Well, I know letters are being formulated now and they're being reviewed. They're in draft status.
How, a letter sent by a piece of paper?
Right now, they're drafting a letter. If they want to choose by sending it out in the parent portal or sending it through email or sending it home, you know, there's plenty of options to get that message out. But I know right now, they're drafting a letter.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's sent by email because previously, the letter was sent in a piece of paper and stacked in the, you know, for the eighth grader's binder, which is like 100 pages of other stuff. So a lot of parents didn't even see that. So if sending by email, that would be, yeah, much better choice. The option is not what we're talking about right now. We're mixing two things, okay? The opt-out is definitely needed, okay? We're talking about in the future, this standard came out earlier this year. It has been more than almost half a year now. And if you guys need more time to research it, you can. But I think we have spent enough time researching it, and we know what's in there. So I don't think, I want to say it loud here, but this is why we bring up this resolution. But this has nothing to do with opt-out option. It's like for elementary school students. That's why we, a lot of other schools are doing this also.
Board President?
And to send a letter is not to, for-
I would imagine, I would imagine this-
And it's happened before. If you look at the board meeting before, we have sent this before, a letter before, for the, during the COVID period. It's to authorize the school district to send a letter. That's the resolution.
Again, Board President?
Thank you, Ms. Peng. Mr. Shi.
Again, we're mixing two things. Opt-out, let me repeat it one more time. Opt-out is for now. This is for future. The letter is for future. Thank you.
Without the contents known of what this letter would say, I don't feel comfortable voting on the idea of sending a letter that we have not written or read yet. That being said, I also agree with Mr. Rivera very strongly that the people of Edison is who we serve. And we all have each other's phone numbers. You certainly have Dr. Bragan's phone number and email. We brought this up tonight at 8:30 at night, eight o'clock at night. Why don't we talk about this between meetings so we seem a little bit more functional next time? Sex ed is not something to take lightly. And the idea to introduce a resolution at the last minute seems to me, it's not the most efficient way to run a board. For that, I apologize to the public for sitting through this. What I will say is that if you want to have a roll call on sending a letter, we could, I guess we have to do that, right? So we had a resolution by Mr. Shi and a second by Mr. Patel. But I'd like to rephrase what the actual resolution said before. When you, can you just repeat it one more time, Mr. Shi?
Preventive measures. That's what we're talking about, preventive measures.
Excuse me, Mr. Patel. Mr. Shi.
So we are introducing a resolution as a district to send a letter to the Department of Education to reconsider the sex education curriculum for the, for the schools.
The first time you said it, you said elementary, or you-
I did not say elementary.
Yes, you did.
I said for the school. For, I did not say elementary, I said for young kids.
It's on YouTube. We're going to be able to watch you say elementary.
Young kids, yeah, okay.
All right. So now this is a school, so this is now for all schools?
You know what, if you want to, worse, let's say for young students, yes.
Well, this is a resolution. I think it's pretty important. That's why we typically write them down, present them to the board a few days in advance, and then the whole public-
You can worse miss it, you can worse miss it later. But the thing is that you guys are all refusing to do it.
No, we're not. We're going to vote. I just want to be clear on what we're voting for. So what are we, we're voting on a resolution to send a letter to the Department of Education to reconsider the sexual education curriculum in all schools?
For young students.
Elementary schools.
For young students.
No, no, not elementary schools.
We're talking about lower grades, that's what we were talking about.
No, Mr. Shi just made it clear that it was not for elementary schools.
For high school, they can head up, you know, the-
So, excuse me, excuse me.
The constraint is more on the elementary and middle school.
But you made the resolution and Mr. Patel seconded it, but you both repeated it differently.
You asked me to repeat it 50 times, so, you know, I did not write it down.
So is it all schools or only?
Especially for young students.
We're discussing about younger kids, learning about masturbation and other stuff. That is what we're discussing, and that's what we don't want being talked about in the lower grades. That's not something that they're going to be talking about in the lower grades. We shouldn't have that.
Just to be clear.
Second graders and third graders, that's what we're talking about. So we want to take a preventive measure. You send a letter to the state and let them know that when you do talk about education, sexual education, that you keep in mind, there are parents that do not want their kids to be influenced, whether they have a math question that says something about sexually-related stuff that they're trying to teach in the lower grades. One plus one is two, not anything else.
Mr. Patel, thank you. Ms. Blackburn, if you could just rephrase the resolution for me so we can have an official roll call vote, if you're comfortable with that?
I'm going to try.
Thank you.
And it would be resolved that the Edison Board of Education requests that the administration send a letter to the Department of Education asking for them to reconsider the, and I'm going to say it as I heard it, which is the sex ed curriculum in elementary and middle school.
That's fair.
Where the curriculum standards-
Mr. Shi, just to verify, that's fair?
Yes.
Mr. Patel, do you agree to second that?
We're talking about sex education in elementary schools, right? Where they're not, where they're not needing to be exposed to material that is sexually oriented for that purpose. And when you're talking about that and you're putting that into questions, in math questions or social studies questions, it's going to reflect for parents, they don't want to have their kids exposed to that.
Okay, so-
So that's what we're talking about.
So, Mr. Patel, you're not the second. Do I have a second for Mr. Shi's resolution?
I'll second.
Board President, can we, can a board member comment on the resolution?
Excuse me?
Can a board member comment on the resolution?
Sure. Mr. Patel.
Yes, so certainly, it's our responsibility that we should address this concern because so many people have reached out about this concern. So yes, 100%. For those who are concerned by this and for those who think that this will be detrimental and harmful, they should have a choice. And that's why we asked Dr. Bragan all the questions and including the messaging about the opt-out and every single thing. But right now, what I feel about President is, there is so much of confusing information here, right? And we don't have a format of the letter. So there has to be some format before we sign off on it.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. I'll give my own board member comment. I'd like to read and write the letter or have the administration write the letter and then read it and maybe get some public input by publishing it to the public prior to voting. Any other board member comment before we do a roll call?
So I would like to make a-
Ms. Matiger.
I would like to make a motion to table the resolution. Until next time. That make sense?
But you already, excuse me, the procedural, because you already a first and a second, so I need to go first. Attorney, you answer the-
Ms. Blackburn.
Attorney?
You just made a motion to table that particular motion, so you should take the motion to table first.
Motion to table, Ms. Matiger. Do I have a second?
Was there a motion before that? So which, does that have a-
Doesn't matter. We'll default to the attorney's opinion. Do I have a second to table this?
That's what I'm asking her. You have a motion on the table first. You have a motion on the table, you have a motion on the table first, before the table, the resolution came in.
Okay. There's no second, so we're going to do a roll call for the original motion. Mr. Shi's motion.
Dr. Haddad?
Just for the record, I wanted to be clear. I'm totally confused by this resolution. I say no for that reason.
Thank you, Dr. Haddad.
Mr. Rivera?
Based on my previous comments, I vote no.
Mr. Barel Patel?
No.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
He has to send a letter so we are not putting sex education in second graders' minds at this moment.
Mrs. White?
I'm going to say no on this one. I think we have, there are too many questions. And we have so many people out here that have, that need answers. And they want to, they want to get answers from us. And we, at this point in time, are not able to give them. A letter is not a bad idea, but as our board president said, it would be nice to know what would be inside that letter. So that we, you know, I have no problem sending a letter to the state at all, but I'd like to know what is going to be in that letter and if it's going to be what we need to be said. That's it.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Matiger?
No, because that's why I tabled it, so that we get some more time to kind of research and make a good kind of, you know, informed letter, even I'm kind of a little bit confused with what's going on, given what I heard has happened this year in Edison, where I am not sure if any of the information that was just shared is actually being taught to the students. I would need to know exactly what is being taught to the students and what this resolution will have, so that we don't look like fools when we go to the state.
Can I make a comment? Are we still voting?
Still voting.
Mr. Schneider?
No.
We have three yeas and six nays. Motion is not carried.
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Rivera.
I just wanted to make, we can make a suggestion. There are a lot of parents out there and community members that have questions in regards to this. So I was wondering if Dr. Bragan, possibly can we have a presentation at our next board meeting to actually discuss our curriculum for the elementary? So parents, if they're not getting the letter, if they're not getting the information, if they don't know how to access the information, can we provide them with a presentation so they know what's going on in their child's classroom?
I would recommend that we do that outside of a board meeting because this is late for parents and for children. Try to do it maybe at a different location, if that's okay with you?
Whatever suits our parents.
Yeah, I think that's definitely doable, and we can set that up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments on resolutions only, resolutions only. Mr. Menesh. You have six minutes.
That's going to be less, but I'll try.
I normally read my disclaimer here.
Go ahead.
And what I will tell you, Mr. Menesh, I'm sorry to delay this. All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please know, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others under the law governing defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of their legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor. And with that said, Mr. Patel, thank you. You have the floor.
You know, it's a good comedian show here. I'll tell you that. None of you agree with one another. This happened about 15 years back in Edison High School. First of all, you guys know what you guys getting, the resolutions are there.
It's a resolutions only, just to keep it that way.
I'm doing resolutions only. You got these resolutions week before, I'm sure. Dr. Bragan gives you week time to read it, understand it, ask one another. You guys spent a one hour back there discussing it. And when you come out here, you're actually better than my kids. Because my kids finish most of the things in 15 minutes. It took two hours. So I'll give you clap for that. Because one another fighting each other, why don't you come to a point, short and simple? I understand, Jerry, I'll actually today say, thank you, Jerry. Asian cultures are different, African cultures are different, European cultures are different. We Americans here are different. When I was little, I was taught differently. When I came to ninth grade, my parent had to sign a paper for this same reason. And you guys on signing papers, sending papers, sending email, took almost 42 minutes, and I was counting the damn thing. 42 minutes, and how are we going to get this? And you're all educated. You got one of the principal there too. And you got Ms. P here somewhere. And she could give you better advice than that. That one piece of paper, every parent should get it, sign it in or out, and he has to be back within a week. If it's not, tell a kid, tomorrow you don't come to school if you don't have the page. If it's not, tell a kid, tomorrow you don't come to school if you don't have the page. If you're missing it, here's a second copy. End of the story. Not 42 minutes of people's time, all these people sitting here-
Stick to the resolutions, you're talking about resolutions, but-
And I am sticking to, I am talking about the resolution.
Okay.
Forty-two minutes to send a one letter out. I think letters should go to all grades, not one. Every parent should know what their kids are learning. All right? Birds and bees are okay, we know it's a boy and it's a girl. What goes in between, parents has right to say no. And I think you guys should all agree, I'm sure you, or Dr. Bragan, or myself, might say, you know what? Let them learn. Because our kids are 23, 21. But most of the kids and the parents, my nephews are five and six, and when they come and ask the question, Uncle, what is this? Then you don't know what to say. But you need to tell them quietly. Teacher's not gonna teach it that way. You know how to tell your girl, or your boy, anything about sex education. Teacher's gonna teach what they've been told to teach. If they do any different, they could get sued, and they're afraid of that, too. And we understand that. And we should understand, as adults, that look, send the letter out. I'm sure Dr. Bragan is smiling, but yes, send the letter out, we need letter out, that's it.
Board President, if I could just-
Answer the question.
Yes, Mr. Patel.
We are all Americans here. You just, in the same sentence, you said Jerry, Shi, Asian, Africans, and then you said, we Americans. We are all Americans, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Manesh.
Hold on. What I was trying to tell Mohan, read my lips again. Every-
We're not Americans, that's what I heard.
This isn't, this is public comment, let's let-
Public comment, the way I say this, Asians-
This has to be resolutions only, Mr. Patel.
Africa does differently, Europeans' lifestyle is different, American lifestyle is different. So we understand, when the parents are there, you need to understand their understanding. When you teach in India, it's different than what we teach in America. In India, your father will not allow you-
Mr. Patel, Mr. Patel.
-to have a girlfriend, Mr. Patel.
Resolutions only, please.
All right, until 18. And that is the thing. What I said is, we are all Americans here, but when we teach here, you need to understand other religion and the nationality.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, can I speak?
Sure, Mr. Rivera.
Um, I just saw that we have some children in the audience, I know some of them, it's nine o'clock. I know some of them-
It's resolutions only, public comment's gonna come at the end, so let's try to stick to resolutions only, just for the nature of this board meeting, on the res, on the agenda, read the agenda, and whatever those resolutions are, that's what we talk about. You have six minutes, and then there's another period at the end of the meeting, which you could talk about anything you want. Okay? Ms. Conway, and then Mr. Holler after. Thank you.
Elizabeth Conway, 20, Netherwood Circle. I just have a few items. Uh, the first one is, under personnel, I'm finally seeing that we're hiring a business administrator. I don't know if you'll come back tomorrow. But congratulations, if you do get, decide to stay.
We haven't voted yet, unfortunately.
I, that's what I said. Number two, I see that one bus driver has resigned, and seven have been hired, if you agree to it. So how are we doing as far as the numbers? I really liked hearing that some of the routes that you're turning down the bids can be filled within the district, which will help us immensely with the new buses, and getting more drivers each month. The next thing, I know Mr. Shi brought it up, but I did notice, you went to full-day kindergarten, but they're only learning for three hours, if you look at the list. Okay? So that needs to be adjusted. Under the middle school hours, for honors English, there's an X, and it doesn't show that honors have English classes. So if you could look up that, too, I'd appreciate it. And I'm just gonna give you my, for the final thing, my final two cents, the standards for this sex education are there. We need to follow the standards unless something happens. Our curriculum needs to adhere to the standards, whether it's English, Spanish, or this. But I know you have monthly meetings for your teachers for in professional development. I think this should be a vital object to discuss, because just like nine of you are disagreeing, teachers will inflict their personal feelings without even realizing it. So I really think it's important that professional development be handled, so that the teachers realize there are boundaries to what can be said and what not to be said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. Do you wanna talk about bus drivers?
Yeah, I believe, Dr. Adaway, we're at 44, and we're still looking for more, but I think 44 drivers now, we have the 30 additional buses, 26 or so operational, that's 56. We're good for September. We're gonna keep hiring, though, and see if we could at some point take over some of the routes we have contracted. So fingers crossed, I hope we're good, I hope we don't lose any routes from vendors as school year approaches and opening comes. We'll adjust it, though, and next year, if we can get up to that 56, or maybe even a little more, to cover for some fluff, that we'll take over more routes. But I think we're in good shape right now, fingers crossed, in closed session, I think we knocked on some wood in there when we found it, so we're in good shape, though.
Thank you. Mr. Holler.
Good evening, hello, everybody. Just a super quick question. First of all, I listened to a lot about the curriculum and instruction resolutions going on here today. I still don't understand what's going to be in, what's going to be out, what's thought of. It was just a lot of arguing back and forth, and I don't think the teachers know, I don't even think the state knows, I don't think anybody knows at this point. So what I'd like to say is, instead of having, you know, slideshows, or even emails to parents, why don't we just release the lesson plans, and let the parents see what's gonna be in the actual teaching and material of what's going on in the Edison schools? If we do that, then parents who see it, obviously, and who are notified, they'll know, and they'll contact, and they'll opt out appropriately. But at this point, so many parents don't even read emails, so many people just throw out their mail, I throw out my mail every single day, so there needs to be a good system in place, because parents don't know what's going on. And I do appreciate the board looking into this matter, because as I have a future kindergartner here, I am very much apt to wanting to see what's inside of his curriculum in the future. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't disagree, Mr. Holler, that information is power. I do disagree, though, that your first comment was, the teachers don't know what they're teaching. I think that's totally false. The curriculum is established, it's online, our teachers are second to none, they do know what they're teaching. If there's been a communication issue, and things haven't been shared with the parents, we could work on that, and we will.
Ms. Kurstetter.
Sarah Kurstetter. So about this curriculum, I'm a little confused why we're two weeks before school, and this hasn't been discussed, when there was an email by Dr. Bragan, sent on Good Friday, or the day before Good Friday, on Thursday, to only one elementary school, not the whole district, just to select few, stating that we were implementing the New Jersey, the 2020 New Jersey standards. How can other districts also opt out completely, so the residents and the parents can opt in their students? Some districts are teaching it one day for 45 minutes, I think it was East Hanover. Middletown is opt-in only. And there's one district that opt out completely, because legally, we only get four points against our-
CUSAC.
-point system? Yes, correct. And nowhere in the law does it state that we will be financially hit for this. So if we're going to make it opt out, opt-out only option, then how come this wasn't put on the portal? I had assigned surveys today, you guys knew this was coming, you seen the news, you released a letter in April, Dr. Bragan, so it's not like nobody knew that this was coming, so why not put the lesson plans available? I went on the district today and shared with people, eighth grade, my 13-year-old has a male health teacher, she has to define and describe anal sex, oral sex, and vaginal sex. She will have an assessment on this by an adult male. Are all of you comfortable? Would you be comfortable describing anal and oral sex and vaginal sex to a 13-year-old girl? Doug? Would you?
I'm not, I'm not a health teacher for-
I know, but seriously, do you know how uncomfortable that is?
That is really-
It is.
And stupid.
Please, please.
So why, so if you, if you guys had a curriculum meeting on this, then how come the lesson plans weren't updated and shared? So I can make an informed decision when my daughter starts in two weeks. I'm just saying. You want us to, you know, accept that you know best, but you're not giving us parents any options. You're not being truthful. That's all I have.
Can I ask a question, Sarah? Sarah? Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So what you just described, where was this discussed? Like which, which grade, which student, which, which, which school district? Not Edison, right?
For the opt-in only, is Middletown, so-
Yeah, but not Edison, because I don't think this is-
No, no, so Middletown, Passera, they, they are opt-in only. So it's not being taught at all, only parents who want their kids to, to take it. So they have to sign a form to say that we can take it. East Hanover is teaching it one day for 45 minutes. I believe Garwood, oh, can't quote me on this, one of the districts is the only district right now that's not teaching it at all. Their lawyers are phenomenal, they got, they, they're taking the four-point hit because you don't, nothing happens to you. You get four points, and whatever. If you, you guys knew that this was coming up, you sent an email in April, a district email went out in April, you had to know this was coming. Why not, if we're gonna do opt-out only, you should've put it on the portal. End of discussion.
Resolutions only?
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Ms. Peng.
Yeah, so what Sarah just mentioned, we already, we also, I heard that the curriculum committee has a meeting, right? We made some change to our eighth grade. So that's not included in the changes? What she was just mentioning? She just mentioned that those, are those included in our eighth grade sex education change?
I can, shall I speak? Oh, why don't you?
I'm not sure what you're asking. What's the question?
The-
Was the option given for us in regards to that?
Two que, I have two questions, okay? Can we do, first question is, the, the thing that Sarah just mentioned, and I heard that we, our curriculum committee also, we introduced some new curriculum in the eighth grade sex education, right? Is that, is that true?
No, that's not true. I'm sorry, Dr. Bragan.
Nothing was introduced in the, so what was discussed in the curriculum committee? And that was just the opt-out option?
I think we summarized it, and I think Mr. Rivera's gonna go over it when we get to the curriculum committee report.
Is it possible that we could, by default, doing a by default opt-out, and only parents who wants to have this education choose to opt in?
Are you asking me that? I mean, it's something we could look into, that could be a board decision. I don't know the ramifications, I heard what Mrs. Kurstetter said about that. I'm aware of CUSAC, but, you know, the New Jersey Learning Standards, as far as my understanding, aren't optional, but we'll take a look at it and explore all options, if that's what the board wants me to do.
Fair enough. Resolutions only, public comment? Anybody else? We're now going to vote on resolutions. First, personnel. I make a motion to approve the personnel report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Matiger, second. Roll call, please, Ms. Clark.
Dr. Haydock?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
I have to abstain on coaching, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Matiger?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Very good, and congratulations, Mr. Patel.
Congratulations, Jonathan.
Congratulations. 3:00 AM, don't forget.
Please don't change your mind after this.
Next, do I have a motion to approve the finance report? I'm sorry, motion to approve the administration curriculum instructional pupil special services report?
Motion.
Ms. Matiger, motion, second?
Second.
Dr. Haydock, second. Roll call, please.
Dr. Haydock?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes, pending administration review, the, the thing about kindergarten.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
To review the, the minutes and stuff, the accuracy for kindergarten.
Okay. Mrs. Matiger?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Do I have a motion to approve the finance report?
Motion.
Mr. Biro Patel, motion?
Second.
Second, Ms. Matiger. Roll call, please.
Dr. Haydock?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Burrell Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Mohan Patel?
Yes.
Mrs. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Matiger?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
All yes, motion is carried.
Thank you very much. Okay, committee reports. Mr. Biro Patel, budget planning and oversight committee report.
Thank you, Board President. So we had our budget planning and oversight committee meeting, August 15, it was a very lengthy meeting, from 4:00 to 7:00 on a nice summer day. The board members in attendance were myself, Biro Patel, Brian Rivera, Jerry Shi, and Doug Schneider. From administrators, Dr. Bragan, Ann Clark, Dr. Eldarrelli, Ralph Barca, and Bill Colibas were in attendance. There were a lot of vendors in attendance that day, was Valerie Moran, Chris Andrews, and Steve from DCO Energy, our architects, Pradeep Kapoor and Donna Gorman from DMR, and representatives from Advanced Solar and Sunlight General Capital. The businesses we discussed was review of solar implementation, RFP presentations, from Advanced Solar and Sunlight General Capital. Review of ECP measures for DCO Energy, by DCO Energy. Review RFP for August for masonry and roofing projects. JP Stevens baseball field plan by DMR architect. Ongoing capital projects, updated by Mr. Colibas. All the technology projects and equipment purchases updated by Ralph Barca, and my school bucks balance updated by Mrs. Ann Clark. The recommendations that the committee made was, committee advised DCO and DMR that further review is required by the committee before making any decisions on the EC proposals, specifically solar implementation proposal, and ask administration not to put anything related to this on this meeting agenda, which is what we are having today. Committee advised administration to move forward to absorb the balance issue with the my school bucks. Committee will regroup at some point after the August board meeting, but I make it a point to send out an email to Dr. Bragan, and we'll regroup very soon about this, because we have a lot of businesses to discuss, especially the bond council and many other things that we'll discuss, so we'll regroup very soon. Now, I was gonna leave it at that, and say that, you know, why don't you guys go on the website and read the rest of the stuff? But someone told me that Mrs. White reads very thorough committee reports, so I was suggested that, like Mrs. White reads very thorough committee reports, you should read the whole report, so here I am. So, yeah, so, you know, whoever gave me the suggestion, I think I should read it. So with the Energy Savings Improvement Program, DCO had put out the solar competitive bidding contract as a part of that energy savings program. They had received six bids, and had brought in two vendors to present to the committee, Advanced Solar and Sunlight General Capital. DCO Energy recommended Advanced Solar for the work. Financial criteria and other aspects were presented and discussed along with the company portfolio. Due to the change in the rules in the federal government ITC, which is now at 30 percentage, committee asked several questions, and understood and acknowledged that the rates may change in the positive direction or either direction based on the most recent ITC. Committee needs a detailed further review of the aspects and implementation to plan, and explore all the options along with the administration. Now, DCO Energy had asked to include that in the August meeting agenda, which is this meeting, which committee recommended the administration not to do so, citing needs for proper research, for accountability to the taxpayers, and having it done the right way with the right vendors at the right time. The ECM metrics were discussed, such as LED tube, lighting controls, boiler replacement, et cetera. Committee decided to carefully review the measures, so that the best options can be chosen by the committee, and presented to the district before the committee moves forward and asks the administration not to move forward with that, the same thing in the August committee meeting. forward with that. The same thing in the August committee meeting. Committee will regroup for discussing this further so that appropriate decisions can be made. DMR architects presented, give recommendation about JP Stevens' baseball field, and the committee liked the idea and everything that was presented. So committee decided to move forward with that project. Ralph Barca provided updates on the technology projects. The new wonderful devices have been ordered for Grade One, Grade Six, and Grade Eight, the new Chromebooks. They are all in cases now received. Maybe that's progressed a little bit more now as we speak. And all the iPads ready for the, are ready for the incoming kindergarten students. All the high school MacBooks are on target, updated. All the children should have their device ready for administration when the school starts. Devices for the staff, that was discussed. The new line boards, that implementation was discussed, and Mr. Barca said it's completed for the high school and middle school. And the equipment for Lincoln School addition and the update of EHS auditorium, the building and the classroom readiness was discussed. Regarding the RFP, the committee asked administration to put out a bid in August for mass masonry and roofing repair company. Committee asked again to do that. Regarding the ongoing capital projects, Mr. Colibas provided an update on all the ongoing projects at the school. There were some changes in additional playground needed for an elementary school, and committee asked Mr. Colibas to move forward with it. Mrs. Clark provided an update on the my school bucks balance, to which committee asked to move forward with that fund as well, with whatever the amount was presented. And matter of fact, thank you, Mr. Colibas, and thank you, Dr. Breagan, that the thing that was presented to us regarding the ongoing capital projects, it went out to every single parent in the email, and a lot of people are very happy about it, and it's going very well. It's very well received in the district, so thank you so much. The next meeting will be very soon. We plan to intend to do it ASAP. Thank you.
Board President?
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Mr. Mohan Patel?
Sure. In regards to the committee report that you just presented, you said DCO had done six bids and two of them he presented. And you said that there's going to be a change in the programs and that that would bring us some more money towards our program, or savings, basically. So why, why have the delay in going back and forth, and why not have the two vendors that they presented come back with revised numbers in regards to the changes that are going to be taking place? This way, we could save more time and get the project started.
Absolutely. That's a very valid question, Mr. Mohan Patel. And so we did not decide on any particular vendors. There were six of them, they brought to our attention, but they just brought in two vendors at that point of time. Now, what they were doing is they were pushing for one vendor more than the other, and all these things, all the measures that they presented, they were very, very detailed measures for the solar. So what we decided, and as you can see the time, it's like four to seven PM, it was a three-hour meeting. So the best thing was do is to evaluate every single measure and all the vendors that were presented very carefully, once again, and that is the reason we decided. And yes, we may very well may go with that vendor, we may have other vendor, or maybe go with the one that was presented, or one out of six. But before even we make any decisions, the decision made was to carefully review as a committee one more time everything, and then decide one way or other, what are we going to do about the whole project.
Is it possible to get the details of that, the measures that you've discussed, as well as the amounts that they come back as a revision before we make a decision on who is going to be voted on?
I think we can send it to Dr. Breagan, and see if we can share it to Mr. Mohan Patel.
Of course.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patel. Curriculum committee, Mr. Rivera.
Sorry, I'm just, I got two percent, so I'm going to try to read it through the paper. So we met, we met August ninth, two thousand twenty-two, from eleven-thirty AM to twelve-fifteen PM. Board members in attendance was Douglas Snyder, Bureau Patel, Brian Rivera, and Kevin Haydock. Ministers in attendance were Ms. Palakowski, Ms. Behir, and Dr. Tuwi. Business discussed, we started off with the secondary, the new curriculum. There was new curriculum proposed for computer concepts, business applications, Python, which was going to be a sequence change, financial investing, and which added, that class was added based on student feedback. So those were the new curriculums that were developed. I also want to let the public know, there was over about thirty-five to thirty-eight curriculums that were, that they reviewed, so I want to give credit to the chief academic officers that had to do all this work. Also, there were some secondary updates, updated curriculums. Many of social studies curriculum guides were revised to incorporate more in-depth resources to support the following New Jersey laws and mandates, Amistad, AAPI, LGBTQIA, and Americans with Disabilities. The goal is to make the curriculum guide a living document. We've easily found digestible resources to support in-depth student learning. Some social studies and English curriculum guides are also updated to meet the changes in the AP programs and tests, or to make improvements to new courses. Art, music, world language, business, and other curriculum guides are also updated because they were outdated. Physical education guides were updated to meet the curriculum standards and New Jersey mandates. More updates to the curriculum is going to come, so within the next couple of months, we should see about over fifty curriculums that are, our chief academic officers and supervisors are going to be working on to update. The main reason is because CUSAC is going to be coming here for a visit. Every three years, we're supposed to be updating these curriculums. We also discussed the new purchase of a textbook for AP history. It was about twenty-five books, maybe about fifty dollars each, so it's about a little over a thousand dollars to purchase them. Then we transitioned to the elementary. The only new curriculum is Spanish for K, because it's a full-day adjustment. Elementary updates for curriculum, adjusted based on teacher feedback and data. So in ELA, they updated to reflect standards alignment and pacing. They also created a resource guide with strategies, prompts, and what, how and why of instruction, also embedded were questions to match the NJSLA language. That was ELA. In social studies, they revised to match new social studies standards, including diverse texts to match the topics. In kindergarten, there was a full-day schedule adjustments. They add science, social studies, and ELA, and math. In math, they're including challenging lessons, remedial lessons, problem-solving framework, detailed models of strategies for teaching and for solving. Rubrics were also added, and also NJSLA-style questions. Science, based on feedback, scope, and sequence was adjusted, and more labs and strategies to make the reading portion more interactive. Within social and emotional, Doug spoke on this earlier. Based on the observations of the post-pandemic, we're adding lessons, including role-playing, read alouds, videos, discussions, STEMS, scenarios for the first ten days of schools, focusing on behavior and self-regulation. And also in GNT, we added to push in class lessons developed on new interactive units. In regards to special education, you know, this goes to Mohan. I actually asked Ms. Dr. Tuwi to look into this, because I know you had concerns. First of all, they updated CST structure, K to eight, that be, that came from feedback from the parent community and administrative observations. CST members will work and provide inputs to their students from the start of kindergarten to eighth grade, so they'll be following their students from K to eighth. And also, we discussed life, the life skills and the transition programs offered at Edison. We had a discussion on the brief overview. So there's four programs that we have here in Edison, life skills, instruction, and school-based enterprises, community-based infrastructure, work-based learning in the community, career and vocational readiness. And all of these transitional programs are on the website, and the website has been updated, so if parents want to see what Edison Public Schools is offering in regards to life skills and transitional programs.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Can I have a quick question?
Mr. Shi?
So you mentioned that, Brian, you mentioned the sequence change for the Python. What is exactly, can you talk a bit more on that? I'm sorry.
It's on the document.
Please use the microphones, gentlemen, so everybody can hear you at home.
Sorry, it's on the document, but I just don't want it to die. I have one percent left, so it talks about the functional.
That's all right. We'll watch, we'll see it.
So I apologize, the battery is dead.
That's okay.
But we could get you that information.
Thank you. Just wanted to see what the change on the sequence, that's all.
Okay.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Patel.
Just want to thank you for including that, Brian, in regards to the life skills and everything, and Dr. Tuwi as well, for bringing it into the realm of our schools. I appreciate it. Thank you. And Maria, for also reconfirming it always. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Just one quick, one more quick question, sorry. The APR history, is this new?
It's, I believe it's a new class, and it might be the existing class, but now they have the numbers. So they have like twenty-five kids that are actually interested in participating in that class. So that was the reason of ordering the books. And I believe they're about forty-nine to fifty dollars each, and they ordered twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Peng?
What class is that? AP history?
Art history.
Art history.
Art history?
Dr. Haydock, policy committee.
Mr. President? Okay, the policy committee was called to order on Tuesday, August ninth, at four-thirty in the Ed Center. In attendance were Mrs. Madiger, myself, Dr. Breagan, and Dr. Adarelli. There were numerous updates at this meeting. Four extensive policy alerts were sent by Strauss Asmay Associates, which our district subscribes to for all updates on board policy. They were all reviewed at the meeting. The first was policy alert two-two-five. This alert was sent last October, two thousand twenty-one, and the following policies are on this agenda today. Emergency virtual and a remote instruction program, so that just brings our district up to par with if we ever have to go back to virtual, which hopefully we don't. But we have a policy that just describes what that, that looks like for us, or if we have to go to remote instruction. Also, the policy under sexual harassment of students. There were revisions made to this board policy and regulation. The revisions were relevant to alignment in New Jersey's HIB laws, especially the HIB Bill of Rights and the Title IX regulations on sexual harassment. That is a new policy. The second policy alert was two-two-six, was alerted to us in January of two thousand twenty-two, so we reviewed the student surveys, analysis, evaluations, examination, testing, and treatment policy. There are mandated changes from our state that are now included in that policy for the first reading this evening, that address the issue of school district administering surveys or analysis, evaluation, examination, testing, or treatment funded in whole or in part by the program of the United States Department of Ed. And it gives the parents that option to opt into those surveys or opt out. Prevention and treatment of sports-related concussions policy was two-four-three-one-point-four. It actually included the terms interscholastic sports, intramural sports, and also cheerleading programs in our concussion analysis. So that's a very important policy update. Also, in that alert, we spoke about the student assessment policy, two-two, two-six-two-two. This policy was revised to include the mandated implementation of approved English language proficiency assessment for our ELL learners. And it also included this, this update with students that have an individual education program to measure our students' progress in ELL. Dr. Breagan is required to report only the final results of these annual assessments to the board and the members of the public according to this policy. Also, we talked about policy three-two-three-three, which was political activities. This policy included the revisions of the term Board of Chosen Freeholders to the term Board of County Commissioners, a little bit of change in verbiage. Also, the terms freeholder and chosen freeholders shall be county commissioners within this policy. Big changes within that policy, as you can tell. Also, we have a new policy on anti-hazing, very important policy for our district in regards to the Timothy J. Piazza's law, which was passed and approved on August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and it went into effect on March first, two thousand twenty-two. This law requires our middle schools and our high schools to adopt an anti-hazing policy. This new policy is mandated and requires a separate investigation to occur outside of the possible HIB investigation. Unfortunately, right now, it should be noted that the Department of Education has not documented the actual procedures yet to comply with this policy. But with all anti-hazing topics, obviously, a HIB investigation is done right away, and then on top of that, there will be a procedure in place that the Department Ed describes to our district on how we go about the second phase of that for anti-hazing. We also discussed in this policy alert the biased crimes and bias-related acts, which is a mandated policy, and it's, and also changed our regulations to revise and update to be aligned with our memorandum of agreement between our Edison School and law enforcement officials. Additionally, school property has been revised to school grounds, just a change in terminology. Also, the reporting provisions have been expanded to indicate when an incident should have prompt, as compared to immediate reporting. As with all reports on biased crimes and bias-related acts, it's immediately reported in the Edison School District, so not many changes within that, even though our, our state doesn't require that significant reporting procedure we do in our district. Administration of school surveys, policy ninety-five-sixty, was revised to include the new mandated statutes that allow school districts to administer surveys, assessments, analysis, similar to the earlier policy change. Then we had policy alert two-two-seven. It was record-keeping for healthcare settings in schools. This mandated policy actually has been revised since it went into effect in our state, but we do have to still report the amount of cases that we have of COVID within our district. Student intervention and referral services is another policy that has been mandated, had some mandated changes. It was discussed at our meeting, and we revised to include the requirement that a school district choose an appropriate multidisciplinary team approach, such as RTI, or multi-tiered system of support, which is considered an MTSS model, for planning and delivering services to children under the Administrative Code. We also had to discuss policy seventy-four-ten, which requires maintenance, repair revisions. The regulation and policy had to be revised to include the mandated verbiage that all districts must employ a certified educational facilities manager, which we have in Bill Colibas, is our director of facilities. And also, we had a policy ninety-three-twenty, cooperation with law enforcement, which had minor tweaks to it to align with the procedures of law enforcement operations in our schools. The revisions were mandated to require school districts to meet annually to review, revise, and adopt the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement between education and enforcement, which were slightly ahead of the game on that part, because Dr. Breagan does do that on a regular basis. And our last policy alert was two-two-eight, and in tonight's, in tonight's agenda, we have every Student Succeed Act policy, which is policy twenty-four-fifteen. It mandated revisions made to update the Title I engagement expectations. The terms that were changed were, the terms parent involvement was changed to parent and family engagement. So a little war on words with that, too. I believe we covered everything in each of the, each of the policy alerts. Sexual harassment of students was the last topic that we discussed. Revisions made to this board policy and regulation were relevant to align with the HIB law, which we concluded our meeting with. So at six-thirty-five, we concluded our committee meeting. We have a few more topics we have to discuss, but I think up to this date, we have our first reading tonight, which has twenty-one policies. I would expect the public to read those, make sure that we understand them, and if there's any questions, please ask those questions so we can clarify. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haydock.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Shi.
So first, I have to congratulate Dr. Haydock for being the chair of the committee. I assume that's what it is. But I don't think I received an email from the board president about the IDU appointment. I would appreciate it. The board president will notify all the board members if there's change on the committees, especially the board president is running on the transparency platform. So the quest, I have a question for Kevin. So all these policies, these are mandate policies, is that correct?
Some of them.
Okay, are there anything that's not mandated that we tweaked the policy just for our district?
Within our agenda tonight, the letter M, capitalized M, those are all policies that have mandated changes, based on what Strauss Asmay sent us.
Okay. All right, so there looks like all of them. So the other thing is, we had a policy meeting earlier this year. There were some items discussed at that policy meeting. Was that ever included in here, or we just ran out of time?
Could you clarify what policies there are?
There were some discussions about creating certain policies for the district. One example that I recall is, we talked about residency verification. We'd like to put into policy that we should do that once a year. And also, I mentioned early in the meeting, anything that over twenty-five thousand dollars, we would like to come to the budget committee, was, you know, just things like that. There were some other things that was discussed at the, at that meeting. I don't remember all of them. Some of the, a lot of them are very specific to our school district, so just wondering if you guys had a chance to discuss that, if not, and is that going to be part of the discussion?
Mr. Shi, I would advise you to send me an email to document anything that was privately discussed. I don't recall any of those topics being discussed in this meeting, because we had some policy alerts. policy alerts that had to be approved by the board regarding some COVID changes and terminology within our policies that they sent us. Anything outside of that, we could certainly bring to our next meeting, but if you send me an email, let me know those topics. I would certainly like to bring them to the attention of the committee.
Okay, so we had those, I think, part of the meeting minutes before. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. We're lucky to have Dr. Haydock. If anybody's unaware, he is the Chair of the Policy Committee. He has his doctorate in Educational Policy from Seton Hall. So it's nice to have an expert that can guide us through the policy. I think he'd probably be a paid expert in a lot of ways, and now he's free labor, so that's very good for us. Thank you, Mr. Shi, for pointing that out. Upcoming meetings. September 12, we have a committee, the whole meeting. That's at the Education Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. September 15, we have at JP Stevens, we have our caucus meeting. That's at 7:00 p.m. And we have a public meeting on Tuesday, September 20, at JP Stevens. That's at 7:00 p.m. So during the summer, we combine the meetings, caucus and action meeting. Now we're going to separate them again, so hopefully they'll be a little bit shorter. Okay? Board member open discussion. Rather than go down the line, I'll ask if anyone would like to volunteer to go first? Ms. Matiger.
So I just had a question, Dr. Bregan, and this is not a question from me, actually. This is something that can inform the parents. Many people who filled in the subscription busing form have still not gotten a confirmation email that they have to pay. What should they do?
The first line of defense is the email transportation. If that doesn't meet with their satisfaction, they email me directly.
Okay. And the other thing is that the parent help desk has certain issues. It's not working properly. If somebody can take a look, because I think some parents were trying to create a ticket, and they were not able to.
Okay. We'll take a look at it.
That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matiger. Other board member comments?
Douglas.
Ms. White.
Hello. All right, Shivi, I did check with Ralph Barca on that, and he said everything is operating very well. So, you know, I'll recheck again tomorrow, but so far, everything is on track. But while I'm here, I just wanted to give everybody a little update. As many of you are aware, the progress regarding Stelton School, the Stelton School property acquisition, has been a topic of recent discussion. And here is a little background information and an update about where we currently stand. Approximately two years ago, the Township BOE Liaison Committee began a dialogue with the Township of Edison to acquire the Stelton Community Center, formerly Stelton School, located at 328 Plainfield Avenue. At that time, the Liaison Committee consisted of three council members. Mayor Joshi was one of those councilmen, four Board of Education members, the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Bernard Bregan, Mayor Tom Lanky, and several other township officials. Because of the hard work and consistency of the committee members, we were able to make consistent progress towards the township, returning Stelton School to the Board of Education. Mayor Lanky was one of our biggest supporters of this initiative and tried everything in his power to make this a reality before the end of his term. As more time passed, certain obstacles arose, specifically discussions regarding the property's status with Green Acres, which were delayed due to the transition of different personnel at the township level. Transitions of this nature are not uncommon, are not an uncommon occurrence, and unfortunately, a regular part of municipal government. In addition, we were notified that an ordinance was required at the township level to pass the ownership of the building to the Board of Education. This is a separate issue from the challenges presented by Green Acres, and this was stalled for reasons beyond our control. That brings us to today and where we currently stand. I have a meeting scheduled on Thursday to discuss this project with Township Administration to determine what steps are needed on their end to help secure the property. The reality is, the Board of Education does not own the property or the building. Anything pertaining to the building needs to go through the township for final approval. I also called Green Acres and are awaiting a response from their office to resume discussions regarding the property. This will also be discussed in detail with our representatives on the Town Council at our next liaison meeting on September 13. What we are trying to accomplish is for the long-term benefit of our children. It's heartbreaking to see progress stalled. We want to have this project completed. Please keep Stelton School in your hearts and minds. If this project is successful, it will be because of the hard work and dedication of the wonderful people, past and present, who saw the potential of Stelton School and what it can bring to our school district. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. White. Well said. Mr. Shi.
Thank you, Mrs. White, for relentless of going for that property. And, you know, you have done a great job, and keep up the good work. So talking about property, I just have a, you know, I saw, I read in the news recently about a property that in Matuchen, the state came in and put a turf field there for one of the middle schools over there. So after further inquiry, we found out that property is owned by the township. So that's why the, you know, the state was able to fund that project. But I just want to remind the folks in Edison, there is also a baseball field at the back of Polanski Park that's across from JP Stevens that is fully owned by the township. And our JV team goes and plays there pretty often. And when we talk about expanding the JP Stevens Middle School, there is a potential we might lose the current JV field that, you know, the baseball field. So if the township, I don't know who that is, if the township or the Liaison Committee can look into that, because if Matuchen was able to get it, we should also, you know, work on it to have the state, you know, to see if they can give us the turf field on that. So that's one. And the other thing, I have a couple of questions for Dr. Bregan. This is about the busing that was mentioned. And if you recall that we have a lot of discussions about GPS tracking for the bus. And we have commitment from the administration that it will be done this year, and we're two weeks away from the school opening. And we all know that, especially the first several days, the busing is going to be an issue. So my question to Dr. Bregan is, when do we plan to share the app with parents so they can track the bus, our own bus with GPS? The second question is, I alluded a little bit earlier in the meeting, is about residency verification. We have mentioned this multiple times. We have received the text document from the township. I just wanted to see, you know, if we have any updates verifying the residency by matching the data, enrollment data we have versus the text residency data from the township. Thank you.
Only two, Mr. Shi?
Yes. Yes, the other one, you know, was already answered.
All right. Thank you. The GPS on the buses, that's only going to be currently on the buses that we own because we didn't put that in the bid for the contracted route, something we could look for.
No, it's our own, yes.
Yeah. So the ones that we already have, the 26 or 28 buses, depending on the operational day that we have already, have the Transfinders on them. The new buses, the 30 new 54-passenger buses that the district purchased, we have to get those installed. That installation date is scheduled for September 7. So the way parents access it, we should send out a formal notice from Transportation. It's MySpot is the app.
What is it called?
MySpot.
MySpot.
Yeah, it's connected with the Versitran, our software, so that if you go onto MySpot, you know, however you download it from the App Store, or I forget the other, the Google one, and if you log in using the email that you use for your parent portal, yours, not your child's, and you're one of those buses, you'll be able to access that bus. It'll automatically populate.
Okay.
So we have to get that information out on how to do that, though. Okay? And that'll be on the buses we have now that we've owned, and on the new buses that are being installed. The installation date is September 7. Unfortunately, those things were delayed like every other electronic device. Regarding the verification, I talked to Rich Benedict, who's in charge of enrollment, and the attendance investigations. Right now, all hands are on deck with enrollment, and they haven't pulled anybody from that. As soon as that gets done, we got two people we're going to dedicate to it. We have the CSV file, actually, it's not even a Word or a PDF file from the township, that we got to run the comparison, and all the anomalies, we will investigate. So hopefully by the September 20 meeting, Mr. Shi will have an update on that.
Okay, yeah, you know, the priority is get the kids enrolled. If we actually have a plan to get it done sometime this year, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera.
Yeah, I just have two comments. First of all, I just want to congratulate Mr. Toth for joining the Edison Public Schools. It's a wonderful family, you know, I hope you're ready. But I wish you well, and you definitely have the support from central administration, the Board of Education, to get this district moving forward. I also want to wish all students and staff a successful school year, because this is the last time that we're going to see or talk to the public until September. So I truly wish all of our administration, all our teachers, all our support staff, custodians, and our students a wonderful year. Yesterday, I was able to access the portal, and I told my daughter and my son, these are your teachers, and they just ran around the house happy. So it was a good feeling. So I wish you all well, and I hope you have a successful school year.
Board President.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Mr. Shi.
Is it possible we can have Mr. Toth just come to the podium, just say a couple of words?
Not yet. I want to talk about him first.
So the residents will know who he is?
Not yet.
Okay.
We'll give him the opportunity. Any other board member comment?
Yes, of course.
Mr. Patel.
All right, so in next two weeks, the school will start. Wishing everyone a very good luck, and I think the spirits are high. Everyone is energized and excited about this new school year. And, you know, I see a lot of parents and, you know, a lot of students all geared up and chatted up for back to school. It's different this time. Everyone, with last two years of COVID and all the disruptions and people not having vacations, a lot of people had the well-deserved vacation and the time off and everything. So people are really, really ready this time, right? Nobody's disappointed. They're really ready. Oh, you're not ready? Okay. But seems like people are ready. And I think from what we hear is, yeah, there are still some transportation applications to be processed, but so far, it's going smooth, right? A lot of them processed, and what I tell parents is, when they reach out for this, is, you know, we still have two more weeks, and the department and administration is working very hard. So hopefully, it should be all good and all taken care of. And we are, what we are sensing is, hoping is, it's going to be all very smooth start of the new school year, right, Dr. Bregan?
Fingers crossed.
Yes. So, you know, we're looking forward for it, and everyone is, a lot of people are energized and enthusiastic. So wishing everyone a very good luck. Let's cooperate with all the teachers, all the principals, the administration, and all the staff members to make it a very good back-to-school experience for every single person. So hopefully, that helps, right? Now, since the Stelton School came up, so it's great, you know, I would, Councilwoman Joyce Schiff, Council Vice President Joyce Schiff Freeman is here. So any property that township wants to give it to Board of Ed, that's great. We will accept it. We'll appreciate it. So of course, we'll take it. But at the same time, we also have to decide very carefully that what we want to do with that property, right? So, for example, I was in the Township Liaison Committee last year, and the Stelton School did came up, as Mrs. White mentioned many times, and, you know, we were asking for it. So she is correct in that, but at the same time, last year was last year. This year, in the Committee of the Whole, led by President Schneider, we already put out an infrastructure plan, right, in which we have 30 rooms being added to JP Stevens. We have auxiliary, the gyms being added, and all the classrooms. Now, being Chair of Budget Planning and Oversight Committee, we have to also watch for the money, right? So we are almost at the money, or maybe a little more, a little less, right? So, yes, we will take the free property, but at the same time, we want to make sure over here that we are not overspending anything, a single penny beyond the budget, because we also, and we'll have the Committee of the Whole meeting, right, President Schneider, on September 12, we'll know more. But at the same time, it's important that we are making sure we have checks and balances with the money that we are spending. Right now, the way we are, from what we saw in the last Committee of the Whole Meeting, is we are almost at the budget we have with the 30 classroom addition of JP Stevens and all the upgrades and everything that we do. And we still have the EC program to do, which is great, which is a self-funding program, and the committee will review that very carefully. But, yeah, getting the properties is great, but at the same time, we have to also make sure that we're going to use, what we are going to use for, do we have a budget for it? And yes, we'll take the free property, but we ought to also be very mindful of the taxpayers' money, so that's something. And, you know, the summer meal program, that was great. So good job by the administration and our food vendor. So that was very good, so a lot of people gave a feedback. That was good. And coming back to the enrollment, so what we have been reporting so far is it's been smooth so far this year compared to what it was last year. The enrollments are getting taken care of, being taken care of faster, in a much smoother way. So obviously, if anyone has any questions, please, there are two weeks left, and Dr. Bregan, I believe, has allocated more resources to enrollment and transportation, so he's going to be all being worked out very well. And the thing that I'm personally most excited about is full-day kindergarten, right? It's starting in two weeks. And just imagine, there are so many parents who speak, who are disappointed, who missed full-day kindergarten by a year, but there are so many parents who are excited, who are going to take advantage of that this year in two weeks. So good luck to all. Welcome back in next two weeks, and we look forward to a very smooth start of new school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Any other board member comments?
Board President.
Mr. Mohan Patel.
Sure, thank you. First of all, I want to say that the Stelton School property is not the township's. It's the schools that we just gave it to the township for whatever purpose and when it happened. It was wrong, but we want it back, basically, and it's not for free. It is our property that we gave you that we want it back. It's the same town, but still. Regarding back to school, I want to say to all the parents, think of the happiness of your kids before the grades, because the grades will come if they're happy. So don't just put pressure, hey, good grades, good grades, good grades. Their mental well-being and happiness is more important as well, so please be cognizant of that. Other than that, back to school. Have a great time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Dr. Haydock.
Very good point, Mr. Patel. First of all, enrollment office is waiting for those parents still that have not registered their children, so please don't wait. It causes an additional burden for the teachers, for the administration, if you wait until the last minute. So anybody listening at home, watching, or that's here tonight that hasn't done that, that's a necessity by tomorrow. Good luck to our newest students, our kindergartners, all the way up to our seniors that are walking into the buildings for the last time. This is it for the free education for you guys as seniors. So after this year, you'll be paying for your education, so make sure you take every advantage of our high school and our JP Stevens and Edison. Good luck to our staff administration. Thank you to the administration for working really hard this summer to get our schools ready. We are ready. We have the best staff that we could possibly have. The students are going to walk in and get a great education, so please, as parents, support them, as well as our Board of Ed, to get our kids the best education they can. And congratulations to our newest member of the team, Mr. Toth. It's a privilege to welcome you aboard, and we wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
I just forgot to say that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would also, I forgot to say that.
Thank you.
I would admit, congratulations, Mr. Toth. And we were, all the board members were looking for a BA from a long time, so you're most welcome over here.
So thank you for that transition, Mr... Is any other board member comments before I talk for a minute? Sorry to the public who's waiting to talk. You know, we respect not only the right of public comment, but we enjoy listening to everybody, and we're sorry to keep you here so late, but I think that at times, we appear to be dysfunctional, right? We appear to be. But you'll see, that gentleman over there, we just hired him with a unanimous vote, and that's something to be very proud of. And when you hire a BA, when BAs aren't a diamond dozen, BAs are tough to find, and good BAs, which we hear this guy is a good BA, he's going to be great and a great asset to our team. For anybody watching or listening, you know, a BA plays such an enormous role in a school district, and it will take the burden off of Dr. Bregan. It's a It's a lot of work to be a BA and a superintendent. Ms. Gluck, Dr. Bregan, Dr. Alderelli, the whole team is going to be thankful to have somebody in that role. I think I could say that with confidence. So, thank you to this board for, when we plan things out and we really are thoughtful about the process, you'll find us to be very agreeable, because when things make sense, they just make sense. So thank you, Mr. Toth, for coming aboard. Also, Dr. Alderelli and your team, thank you for hiring so many fantastic people that are going to be working in the school district. We approve the personnel report, but you'll see in the news, news about teacher shortages, right? And the administrators that work behind the scenes to onboard our staff in all of these different schools, we have 19 buildings we have to, you know, all under Dr. Alderelli's leadership. Dr. Bregan and Dr. Alderelli actually, I think I could say this as well, is they're the final interview for everybody that comes aboard here in Edison. It's really exciting that we don't have a lot of vacancies here, right? We still need some teachers, but for the most part, when you compare us to other school districts, we're doing really, really well. And that's because they work hard. It's not because it's a mistake or an accident. We do get some accolades in the news sometimes about our salary guide, which I think is pretty attractive, but it's not just the salary, it's about how you sell how wonderful it is to work here in Edison. So thank you for that. And finally, I'll end and echo the sentiments about the enrollment and transportation. It's been really, really fantastic to see a lack of lines. If you remember last year, we were at this point in the year, there was a ton of people just waiting outside and we've, I think collectively figured out ways to triage that, plan for it, really be thoughtful about the process while still maintaining the integrity. Mr. Shi is right, we have to verify things like residency and we have to make sure that people that are enrolling in the schools have the proper documentation. We seem to be, have figured out a way to do that, but do it a little bit more efficiently, because at the end of the day, as a taxpayer, there's a service element to what we do. That's the stuff that this board can really impact in terms of making sure that we're guiding the district in the right direction. So thank you, Dr. Bregan, again. I'm saying thank you a lot, because I think that all of these things are well-deserved. So as dysfunctional as we might seem at times, you'll see that functionally, we're pretty good at other times. So, and we're bad at telling people when we do good things. We only focus on the bad. So with that said, if the board allows me to, I'll turn it over to public comment.
Yes.
Board President, can I have one quick comment?
Yes. Mr. Shi?
I just want to take this opportunity to thank the two persons who has been taking the VA row, is Dr. Bregan and Ann Gluck. And stepped in whenever we needed and Dr. Bregan stepped in, you know, wanted to fill the vacancy. Now with Jonathan on board, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank them for their hard work, you know, Ann and Dr. Bregan, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. Mr. Toth, I'd love you to just say hi to everyone, but be very brief, because we have public comment. Behind the microphone, though, because everybody at home, you've got to remember, there's millions of people watching you.
Pardon me, in the interest of everyone's time, my name is John Toth, currently serving as Assistant Superintendent for Business Board Secretary Franklin Township in Somerset. Very excited for this unique opportunity, very honored to be, Dr. Bregan's recommendation, ultimately to have all of your support and serve the children of Edison and the community at large. I look forward to working with you over the next school year and years to come. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much, Mr. Toth. Okay, I'm going to open public comment and I'd like to start with our life scout here.
Board President?
Yes. Mr. Patel?
So...
Mr. Patel, just a note, he would like to introduce our next speaker.
Sure. So, the next speaker is Kushi Sharma. She is Senior Patrol Leader and Founder of Troop 2G Edison, so which is one of the first female scouts, PSA troops in the nation, right? So she has been in scouting for about three years and is finally, she is approaching the milestone of the Eagle Rank, potentially making her one of the first five females of color in the state to earn this award. Now, Kushi is also working towards the BSA, DCSA, and the Distinguished Conservation Service Award, which is awarded to scouts for the exceptional service in natural resource conservation. Upon the completion of these requirements, she will be the first female of all of New Jersey to earn this award.
Wow.
Right. For this award, Kushi has completed two projects. She installed some bat houses in Edison Woods Park, along with the recycling kiosk at Papianee Park, and she will now elaborate more on her projects. And Kushi is a senior at JP Stevens High School, have been a district resident and student lifelong, so it's a proud moment for Edison. So, flow is all yours, Kushi. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome here.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Patel. I'd like to thank the board to have me speak here today. And as Mr. Patel mentioned, I will be discussing the conservation projects that I've been working on for more than a year now. I do have some pictures that I would like to give to the board, so may I approach the table to pass them out?
Sure.
Thank you.
We're going to look at these and pass them around while you're talking.
Sure, sure. So, my first project, which also doubled as my Eagle project, works towards bat conservation since bats are crucial for our environment despite the social stigma that they face, especially in recent times due to COVID-19 rumors. Bats are not only pollinators, but for many plant species, but are also natural means of pest control. And as you can see in the pictures that I'm passing around, I've installed eight bat houses on four 16-foot poles in Edison Woods Park, and I will be following up periodically to track the usage of the bat houses and their maintenance in the future. My second project works towards recycling contamination and the common habit of wish cycling, which is putting something in the recycling bins in hopes that it will be recycled. So research has proven that recycling actually induces a positive emotional experience for people who want to believe that there's a better destination for their waste than landfills, so they recycle it instead to try to help the environment. However, the effects on the environment are quite the opposite. So recent data from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection shows that nearly half of the disposal that goes to the recycling plants ends up in landfills as non-recyclable material, otherwise known as waste. Even though this may not sound like much, the additional energy required for transporting this material and processing the non-recyclable waste to the garbage dump is having the opposite impact on our wallets and, most importantly, the environment, because of the air pollution emissions that it induces. Since the separation machines can't completely prevent non-recyclable waste from being processed, the quality of the resulting recyclable product is compromised. And because of all this, the recycling efforts put in with good intentions are hurting our environment and even reversing the impact that recycling attempts to make. So to combat the issue of recycling contamination, my project consists of two main parts. Part one is the installation of an informational kiosk at Papianee Park, as shown in the pictures that are being passed around. The kiosk includes informational graphics that discuss wish cycling, as well as visuals designed by Middlesex County and the NJDEP Recycle Right Program. They also inform citizens about what they can and cannot recycle. The second part of my project, whose flyer is also on the page being passed around, is a door-to-door campaign around Edison, in which volunteers will sign up to visit houses in Edison to inform residents about the negative impact of wish cycling on the environment and how they can recycle right. Each resident that is visited will also be provided with an informational fridge magnet and a Middlesex County recycling guide that I will hand out to everyone here, and I will also pass out to the board members after the meeting. I request that all the members here also, I will pass around a signup sheet and they write down the addresses and contact information if they would like to volunteer, but this is only for data purposes for my project. So in addition to in-person outreach, I aspire to reach citizens through social media and online platforms in order to really make a change for Edison. This campaign was released just last week and is currently ongoing, and my goal is to reach around 500 houses in Edison, but I'm in need of volunteers. So since this is an educational campaign, I am seeking your support to spread awareness about recycling right to help our community, and also to spread awareness about my door-to-door campaign so that other youth in Edison can also get the opportunity to learn about and educate others about the importance of this environmental issue. So I have three main requests from the Edison Board. First, as I previously mentioned, I'm in need of a lot more volunteers for this campaign to run successfully. If I send a drafted message with my online flyer to a board member, can the board kindly forward the email to middle school and high school principals to be forwarded to all students so the youth can get the opportunity to participate in this? The second is also to educate the most Edison residents about recycling right. I wanted to send informational flyers to all Edison students. With the potential email that I previously mentioned, middle school and high school students will already be covered about this topic and they'll be informed, so the paper flyers would only be necessary for elementary schools. However, since I was only able to fundraise 50% of my goal so far for both projects, printing these flyers would be another huge expense for me, so I'm requesting for the EBOE to Edison Elementary Schools to support me by printing these flyers to help our own environment and our community. Lastly, I would request EBOE members to help me spread awareness using their social media platforms to raise awareness about the importance of recycling right and my campaign has a great volunteer experience for the youth. All of this would be a great helpful help for me and without these actions, this environmental campaign won't be nearly as successful as it can be. I would lastly like to request the citizens present here and the citizens watching to spread the word about this campaign. I can provide my contact to anyone who wishes to volunteer, and again, the sheet that will be passed around that will be requesting your house addresses, you can also provide your phone number and email addresses and I can contact you about the volunteering opportunity. And, but most importantly, I deeply request everyone here to use the guides that I have, that I will be handing out about recycling right and take the responsibility to help make our earth a better place. Thank you for your time.
Wow, thank you so much. Thank you. I'm sure the board, I could speak for the board and say, "Thank you so much for coming tonight, you were very patient to sit here and I think it was worth the wait, because I think you're going to have a lot of people that are reaching out to support your efforts." And I wish you a lot of luck on your road to Eagle, I know that it's hard. I'm an Eagle Scout as well from Troop 12 in Edison.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, when people ask how I, you know, kind of, you know, developed some skills over my career, it's definitely, the Eagle Rank is definitely a building block, so best of luck to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And I, my personal appeal to you would be, don't move out of Edison, stay here and be active in our community. Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, Ms.?
Hi, I'm Shifali Patel. I'm a PGYN mom here at James Monroe and I want to personally thank Shivie for taking the opportunity to listen to some of our concerns. I live off of Lincoln Avenue, off of Amboy, and we were unaware that our bus stop had changed without any notification. I spent 20 minutes talking to Ms. Rodriguez on the phone because she had no clue. So she made all of our bus stops for elementary kids as young as five on Amboy Ave and Lincoln Ave and going further down on Amboy Ave. Amboy Ave during morning rush hour is ridiculous. I've nearly gotten hit and I expressed this concern to her, that it's very dangerous for 10 to 12 kids to be waiting on a corner that early in the morning when traffic is coming down Wobberjav, coming down Amboy Ave, and it's two lanes going into one at that stop. So I am requesting the Board of Ed to look into this matter, because I don't think elementary school students' bus stops should be on major roads and we're not even sure why the change was made from Safran to Amboy Ave. And I had also mentioned this to Ms. Rodriguez. So, there was a couple of parents here, but they had to leave unfortunately and their, our entire block is all kids, as young as five, as old as maybe fifth grade. So we're requesting that if you can possibly look into this matter, because we don't want any of our kids in danger. We all help each other when we can't get to the kids, get our own kids to the bus stop, but our neighbor that lives on that corner said they can come up to our stoop until the bus comes. The problem is, and I've seen this happen, cars don't stop for buses. And that's a big problem. They don't stop for pedestrians, they don't stop for buses, especially in that early morning rush and during evening hours. So that's one request. The second question I had was, in terms of the GPS tracking, are you going to be putting out a list of buses that are having those, or will that be sent to the parents whose kids are on those buses?
We're going to get that information out to you.
Okay.
And regarding the stop, I thought that was changed. That stop wasn't changed?
So, it was originally Amboy and Dartmouth, which is two blocks over, and we would have all had to get into our cars and drop. So now it's on Amboy and Lincoln, which is a major road.
I thought it was moved in, but we'll take a look at that, too.
Nope. The other concern was a parent who doesn't have any transportation is asked to take a stop. I'm speaking on behalf of her, because she can't get here, she has no transportation and she wasn't available when I came. Her stop was put down by Royal Albert's Palace and she's an 18-minute walk from there.
Do me a favor, shoot me an email tomorrow with those concerns.
Absolutely, and I will send that parent's information as well, because she was taking the bus stop with my kids, Lincoln and Safran, and as were the rest of the kids. So our concern is really, I don't know, we don't, one, we don't know why the bus, the stops were changed from Safran to Amboy, and we weren't aware. We were, I was told after someone else had checked it that it was changed. So no communication to parents about the change, and then on top of that, the person who's in charge of it has no idea, like, what's happening. So...
Email me tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Lincoln and Safran, I'm pretty sure we changed it back to that, but I'll find out.
I just checked while I was sitting in the meeting.
If you didn't get notified, we'll have to follow up on that.
Okay.
Email me tomorrow, we will address that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Dr. Bregan?
Thank you, Ms. Patel.
I think they did not change it, you thought it was changed to Safran, but they did not change it to Safran, they changed it to another place, right? Amboy, rather than Safran, it went to, it went to Amboy.
We'll figure it out. Email me tomorrow.
Thank you. Ms.?
Elaine Kaufman, 15 Cutter Avenue, Edison. A couple of years ago, I don't know if any of the board members were board members at that time, but my organization had printed and donated, when Beth Maroney was on the board, donated this Keep Safe with Officer MJ Bear, a Street Smart and Street Safe Stranger Awareness booklet, a colored booklet, that the teachers could work on with the students or that the parents can also work on with the students to help them understand, and the pictures were done by a JP Stevens student, who was an art student going for her art degree. Okay, so all I wanted to know was, is there any feedback on this, or was there any feedback on this ever? And are you interested in any more of these booklets? So I could just have, I have three of them here, but I would like them back if you'd like to just take a look. Okay, the other thing is rivalry is good at times. But I've been to a Board of Education meeting and I've also been to a council meeting. The council meeting, first of all, was a coach with a group of younger students who had won their division in baseball. And a snide remark was made, "See, even Edison Township High School area, or Edison, South Edison, could be just as good as JP Stevens." Okay, I heard the comment, gave me a little shudder, but then I was here at a Board of Education meeting, forgot when, but there was a video showing all the different teachers who were chosen as Teacher of the Year, and there was an Edison High School principal, who I don't know at this point, I only knew Scanlon at the time, but anyway, I don't know, is he, is he here? I don't know.
The principal was just here, in the room.
The principal was just...
The current principal, yes.
Oh, well.
Mr. Ross.
Anyway, I'm sorry, I have to say this, though, he was on this video saying, "Oh, I have chosen this young man, even though he was from JP Stevens." Everything is like a push-down, a condescending remark. It doesn't feel good. I've been here for over 50 years, my kids went to this school, I never heard such things before, and we always worked together. The only thing I heard of was that the Recreation Department had not given the North Edison baseball teams any money that was the same as what South Edison had gotten, and that was from a fellow who went to check it out, Swaljay was his last name. So there is some kind of something going on here, where it always puts down JP Stevens or North Edison. Comment taken. Okay, the last thing. I am a facilitator for STEP, Systematic Training for Effective Parenting, and what this does is, it teaches parents how to be good parents in having good relationships with their students. And when I did this for 10 years... good relationships with their students. And when I did this for 10 years, it was phenomenal how the judges in this area had sent parents to me who were having terrible problems with their kids. And this program is like hands-on, concrete, the best ever. If I could just introduce it to the PTAs, I would appreciate your, you know, saying it's okay. That's it. So if you want to look at it, but I would less, just like to go over some of the things with the parents and see if they would like to take the course. It's eight weeks and it deals with all different situations on how to handle it so that there's not a confusion. One such thing is, like when your child is in the store and you're supposed to leave the store and he doesn't want to. And you want to really work to get him out because you have things to do. And so what do you do? You give him a little bit of time. Okay, you have three minutes to do what you want to do. And then we have to go. And as long as he feels he has some power in the situation, then it makes it very easy. So we talk about all these different things. Can I bring it to the PTAs? That's what I want to know. It's up to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll follow up with you, Elaine. If you could shoot me an email, I'll follow up with you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Bregan.
I'm going to pass my gavel to Ms. Mattiger for just a minute.
Susan Campione.
Susan Campione, HCF Record in Edison. First of all, I just want to say that whoever you hired to install the air conditioner here, you should hire all around town because it's freezing in here. But it is that time of year again. I am the chairperson for the ETA Scholarship Committee and I am selling the Boskovs Shopping Passes again. They are $5. On October 19th, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., you could shop at the store and get 25% off. So I know last year the board was very generous. A lot of you bought them. But at home too, if you want to contact me at Woodrow Wilson, I can deliver them to you in Edison, send, mail them, whatever. But they are $5 and the money goes towards the scholarships that we give out to the kids at both high schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Next, Manish.
Manish Patel, 240 Wallman Ave. One of the things I would love to say is, last year I said the same thing, Inman Avenue, bus stops. Kids play with the basketball, high school kids, middle schools. They change the kindergarten to the park. Why can't they change everything to the park? They walk eight blocks from McKinley all the way up to Inman on Alice and Beatrice. They both are brought to Inman Avenue to go to school. What happens? Kids playing basketball on Inman Avenue because ball is a ball, it's going to go either way. As long as it goes on Beatrice, there is no problem. Inman Avenue is just like Amboy Avenue. So please look into it. Other thing is transportation. Why can't we put, if the bus pass is not given to parents on timely basis, who do they contact? Can we put that on, give it to them tonight if it's possible? Bus route, if they didn't get the bus route, can we keep that number out? It can't be just one person because people don't pick up the phone calls. Subscription, if that's the case, who do they contact? If we send an email and nobody answers for a week, who should they contact? Can they contact both people? Because Dr. Bregan has other things to do. It's 20 days from the opening. Some of the parents submitted stuff on 7/6, July 6th. They still didn't get the answers of what to do or where to go. So can we take care of that part? One other one was, there's a kid who got into a stamp project in Edison High School and he's part of North Edison. He has to walk 25 to 30 minutes to get to his bus stop and he has to get 20 minutes early or 40 minutes early. What does this kid do? In order for him to get there at 7:40, he has to leave the house around at least seven or before. That's ridiculous. We need to work on that. The other thing is, if you look at the kids, the biology, did, somebody told me last meeting or meeting before, they will let you know when we're bringing it back. Alright? Do you guys have any definite plan? Or is it just like your resolutions you passed today and it's pushed away and forget about it? Five years later, somebody else will look into it. I spoke to Rutgers University, one of the professors who I know. And he says, Manish, it's not going to hurt you today. It's not going to hurt you for the next four years. It's the fifth year when the ninth grader goes in and they don't have enough laboratory classes. He might not be accepted in MD program. Guys, we need to listen. This is something we're hurting the kids four years down the road. Many of you might not be here. Somebody else might be elected. Many of you might have gone to other positions in the township, which all of you are looking into, councils and mayor and everything. But the kid who has no clue goes in the ninth grade thinking, I'm going to become a doctor, can't get to Rutgers, can't get to Ivy Hill programs. All Ivy Hill schools not going to take him. So think about it. Please, one of you go and talk to professors with your curriculum, especially you, Brian. Being a friend, do that for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms.
Hello, I'm Anita Balagundhadrin from Parker Road. I'm the mom of a seventh grader and I have two questions. One of them is my question and there's a couple of other parents that wanted me to ask this question. And I have another question which is by another parent who couldn't make it here. So the first question is elective education. I know this has been discussed before ad nauseam, but really, we don't really understand, in spite of all the discussion before, why the instruction time had to be cut in half. Because we don't believe that this decision is scalable. If there's more students going to be joining, where before we had instructions for four marking periods, that became two marking periods this year. If the class sizes go up further, will two then become one? Because that's, that's not really how this should be working. If class sizes are growing, then that means there's more people, more taxpayers that are coming and you're getting more tax dollars. You should actually be hiring more teachers, not cutting down on instruction time. You should actually be able to scale up, not scale down. So I had some specific questions because this is the first that I'm hearing about this after seeing my daughter's schedule for this year about how the instruction time came down by half. And I had two specific questions to the principal. The first question was, is there a risk of memory decay with passage of many months without reinforcement after the child has completed, has completed the marking period? And the second question was, is the scheduling change going to result in more effective learning outcome for the child? And the response that I got from the principal was, we don't have evidence to answer both of your questions. And that's ridiculous frankly. For, for the board to make policy decisions without proper evidence and where it runs contrary to common sense is, is just reckless and it's irresponsible. So I, I would like to ask the board, why did you not just decide to hire more teachers instead of cutting down on instruction time? That's my question. I'm sure I'm speaking on behalf of a whole bunch of other parents as well. So I'll first let you answer that question before I move on to the second question. And I think I would like to hear from Dr. Bregan first and then maybe anybody else from the board can, can also answer the question because I want to hear from both the admin and also the board.
You could finish your, all of your questions. You have three minutes remaining and then we'll answer them at the end.
Alright, got it. So I'll just wrap up the first question saying, I'm still paying the same tax, taxes, but my elective education time has come down by half. You're not going to reduce my taxes, but the value I get from my taxes has most certainly come down. So that's number one. And second question, this is the question another parent had that couldn't be here. So this parent's child is in choir. And this is a concern of both the child and the parent. The child is concerned that with only two marking periods for choir, the concerts and the performances that they're going to be giving is also going to be cut in half. So the child is now concerned that they won't have as much time to perform because this has been, because of the time or, or the lost opportunity, I would say. And one of the responses that I got from the principal was that there's going to be supplements during off semester time. So what the supplements mean is that parents and children need to put in more time on their own to catch up where the teachers couldn't do stuff that they should have been doing. So parents and children are expected to pull their weight, but the teachers, they don't want to pull their weight? That's, I would like to understand that a little more. And this is just my personal opinion. I could be absolutely wrong here and I would be happy to be proven wrong here. So those are my two questions. The choir question, where the child loses performing opportunities, that's the second question. And the first is, why did you just not hire more teachers? And how is this going to be a scalable solution if the class sizes grow further? Would you be cutting down from two marking periods to one marking period then? I moved from a school district where I paid one-third the taxes that I'm paying right now because this is such a solid educational system here. And I don't want to be paying the same taxes and more taxes year on year to see less value from what I'm paying. Those are my questions.
Thank you very much. You could have a seat and then I think Dr. Bregan can address some of your concerns. One thing I will just point out is that you mentioned that the board decided to change the scheduling. The board, that wasn't a voting item from, from the board. We never had a vote or, you know, changed it. It was a managerial decision within the schools. I will also, before turning it over to Dr. Bregan, assure you that our infrastructure plan, which includes expansion of J.P. Stevens, many other schools with classrooms and then also multipurpose rooms that will be used for things like you're, you're talking about electives and those types of things will be included in this infrastructure plan. Without that infrastructure plan, you're right, it's hard to offer everything we want to offer because the infrastructure needs with the amount of people moving into Edison over the years. We see the enrollment reports. It's very, very important that we address the overcrowding, which is what we're doing. Our next meeting is in September and it's on the 12th and you can watch that. You could also look back at our other meetings and you'll see that this board unanimously supports making sure our students have the best environment. I'll say one more thing before turning it over to Dr. Bregan. Our teachers are very passionate and they're very good at what they do. And there's absolutely no, there should be no doubt in your mind that the teachers are, are going to put forth the best education for our students. Dr. Bregan, you, you're not allowed to just speak, I'm sorry, but I just wanted to address some of those things. You could speak at the end, you have one minute left. Dr. Bregan.
Sure. I think at some point what, what may work out for us is for, for us to meet because I don't think you got all the information correctly. The instruction time's not cut in half. It used to be on alternate days like an A/B schedule and it went to a semester schedule. Instructional time is exactly the same. It's not cut in half. It's just spread out there in different, this is my turn to talk. Okay. And to make a comment about the teachers not cutting their weight, that's just disrespectful and it's not accurate. And you know, this isn't a place where I think it's appropriate to, to say that in a public forum when the information is not accurate. And regarding taxes, we all pay taxes and this board and the previous boards have kept the tax levy for the school district at zero. This is the third year in a row it's been the exact same. So if your taxes have gone up, it's not because of the school budget in the last couple of years. We're committed to doing all we can to provide the optimal programs for the students. As the board president mentioned, there's an overcrowding issue that we're trying to address. And many of the issues that are related to our schedules and our classes are related to space. We physically don't have the space in the buildings. We're working on it and we have plans in place moving forward. Unfortunately, it's going to take a little bit of time. But I would love to meet with you, go over your concerns, provide the data that you're requesting because I could surely share that data with you. And try to provide you what I believe is the accurate information. Thank you.
Thank you. No, at the very end, you have one minute left after everybody's done speaking. Ms. Kurstetter. And Ms. Joyce, you're, you're up next.
Sarah Kurstetter, ID Echo. When I filled out the surveys today, I noticed the verbiage on the surveys from last year to this year changed. The survey consent form only addresses adolescents' social health issues. This, does this survey mean that any other surveys that are given to students, the parents will get prior notification before the school year? And should I assume, Dr. Bregan, based on our meeting that we had in June, that the Health Wellness Survey given to sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, which is a survey that's not medically accurate, has been removed from the 2022, 2023 lesson plan? And eighth grade, third-party political survey that eighth graders are required to take, well, not required to take, they're asked to take, it goes through a third party, which then their data is sold to the political machine. So my eighth grade son took the survey, our data was sold based on how his political views are given. I was not notified of this as a parent. So am I assume, based on the verbiage and the consent forms that were removed, that this was removed, that I will be getting another consent form if the, the wellness survey is not being taken out of the health curriculum and the third-party political survey to see what political party, if you're socialist, a communist, a Republican, a libertarian, or a Democrat? And they have a discussion about this in social studies. And the only reason why I found this out is because I was working from home during COVID and I listened to the political discussions by the social studies teacher, Mr. Shapiro, and his political viewpoints with the rest of the class. So am I going to get another consent form stating for political, third-party, and for wellness survey? And how are these teachers, when I take the consent and put it on the, on the portal, when I've raised this question with other parents, they also have confirmed to me that their kids, they filled out the consent form not to get surveys and they were still giving it to it. So how are the teachers going to get this information from the portal that their students are not supposed to get these surveys? Because they're still getting them. The teachers are still giving them even though the parents are checking off the box saying, no, I do not consent, they're still getting them. And does the district understand that you're opening yourselves up for liability? And legally, for the third-party political surveys, you're not supposed to be giving to them under 13 years old. So if you have an eighth grader who's 12, you're not supposed to be legally doing that. You're legally not supposed to be doing it without my, my consent and my knowing. So I want to know how the district's going, if you're, if it's being removed and if it's not, if additional consent forms are going to be put on the portal for the rest of us and if they're not, how as parents are going to notify the district that this is not going to happen? Because I did notify the district last year, but I, my child was still given a survey. Sent two emails. Still got it. And my other question is to the board attorney. So when I met with Dr. Bregan in June, I opened to Oprah and I requested, there was a survey slash questionnaire that was given to John Adams, middle school students only, parents didn't know about it, that asked them their gender identity and sexual orientation so that they could be involved in a pride club, pride club that only happened during lunch hour. so that they could be involved in a pride club that only happened during lunch hour, not after school. Parents weren't notified about this. So I requested several times through the Oprah machine, which I found out from the state that the Oprah, that our domain email has been removed. So I sent the email to Dr. Bragan. I got no response. We had a meeting in June. He said that that questionnaire is with the lawyer, so with the law firm. And the law firm was on the email and he couldn't give me that questionnaire. So I'm asking the board attorney, you don't have to answer me now, but I would like to get a response back. What legal obligation, if I ask for the document, it is a document that was sent, I put an Oprah request in, why can't I get that request? And that's all I have. That's all I have.
I could address the first couple. On the third-party political survey, that shouldn't be taking place and I can't support that. So if that does occur, let us know. That should not be taking place in schools. Regarding all surveys, parents have to have a positive consent, which means we can't have implied consent for surveys. It was in the two policies that were approved tonight. Or the first reading was tonight that we reviewed at our committee, and that goes for assessments as well. So no student, regardless of what you found in your opening packet, there should be a consent for, a positive consent for every survey by the parents if the child is a minor. So your children shouldn't be participating in any surveys unless you, as the parent, provides that consent. We will share that information and make sure our staff knows it. It is our policy and our procedures and they're aligned with the state code and the law. Regarding the Oprah thing, to be honest, I forget. I know we had some discussions about what were Oprah documents and what weren't. You and I met together. If you didn't get something that is, you're entitled to, we will figure that out. I'll review it with the attorney. I did review, I don't remember your exact request, but which documents were considered Oprah-able, which were provided, and I'll follow up with you on that. I'll follow up with the attorney as well.
Just one additional comment if I west-
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Dr. Haddock.
Just one additional comment to that. The policy that was reviewed tonight and has its first reading is titled 2415 and it's the one I was referring to, Student Surveys Analysis. It only covers those surveys for prior written consent that is issued by the United States Department of Ed. So some of these surveys I'm not familiar with. We could talk after this meeting. But the policy tonight that's on the first reading is specifically for the U.S. Department of Education, not New Jersey Department of Ed. So anything they're issuing regarding psychiatric evaluations, topics that maybe some state is producing, parents would have to give written, prior written consent for that. And that's the mandate that's in the revision tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Haddock. Ms. Joyce.
For some reason, I wish they would bring civics back to school because I seen Jay Leno and different other people go around and ask adults that they don't even know that there's three branches of government. So that is a problem there. On a good note, I'm excited about our class reunion next month. And as on the discussion, I don't know exactly what the eighth grade, you know, I don't go ahead and stuff without knowing all the information. But if some of the information she said is true, then being a middle school teacher for some years, girls, I don't know if it was a male teacher, if I would really want to do that. So it's kind of iffy with me if I would be in a class with a male teacher discussing some items. I'm just, you know, I'm just saying by me being in the middle school. I'm just talking about from experience at all. Then I would like to know, first I'll say the Sharks, Sharks football team, they donated $1,500 to the Jets, over $1,000 to the domestic violence, and to the pantry. So, and then I noticed that they were paying $375 a game. And I was wondering, did the Sharks football, do they have the same advantage as the cricket? Can they pay like the $1,500 price for the year? One question. Second question I want to ask through you, directed to Mr. Shi, okay? And I have receipts in case he starts lying.
Address the-
My daughter's like-
It's okay, Ms. Joyce.
Yeah. My daughter's like five foot two, 125, graduated TCNJ. And Mr. Shi has encouraged people to attack, bully, and intimidate her. My daughter did not sign up for politics. I did. So he and his friends, you can treat me like garbage all day. It's okay. She did not sign up for it. So I don't understand why he would spend time encouraging people to bully, intimidate, and attack my child while she's doing her job at all. I'm very, you know, maybe he can explain it to me because he always plays this transparency game. And then the first thing he does is he goes on his little WhatsApp at all, and I can show you the clips if you need the clips. Thank you.
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Can you please read what are the things that I told people to attack, to intimidate your daughter? You're making things up. Joyce? No, 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 my talk, my, no, my platform.
Mr. Shi, if you're going to raise your voice, she might raise her voice too. So why don't you just-
Yeah, she's making, she's making things up, okay?
Mr. Shi.
When you talk about, that's the way I'm talking. When you talk about the Shark football, okay? They have not been paying anything for the past five years.
Excuse me, Mr. Shi, we cannot, Mr. Shi, excuse me, Ms. Joyce?
Yes.
We must tell the truth on this dais.
Correct.
They absolutely have paid.
I have an email?
Under my, as, me as board president, they have absolutely paid and they just played this month and they paid.
I have a email?
I'm the board president and the superintendent sitting next to me.
I have an email.
Did they pay? Yes or no?
This year.
From when?
This year, yes. Under your presidency, I don't know what happened. Under my presidency, they've paid. So don't give anybody else a different impression.
Well, in the past, before you were president, in the past five years, they didn't pay.
As board president, maybe you should have looked into that.
Well, because we gave it free to everybody. We make it free to everybody.
Ms. Joyce, not-
Excuse me.
You have three minutes, you have three and a half minutes remaining at the end. Thank you.
So maybe you can address to the public-
Mr. Shi, please.
Maybe you can address to the public why the township recreation department goes into the field and check IDs only for cricket players and only for a Woodrow Wilson fields. Why, what, why not all the other fields? Why not the township managing fields? Okay? Only Woodrow Wilson. If I remember, that was the email that was sent to the cricket players. So you're making, you're, my platform, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, Joyce, you know, you've been out of council, you know the rules, okay? It's my talking, it's my talking. You come here to accuse me out of, why don't you show the text messages?
Stick to Facebook, Joyce. Stick to Facebook.
Yeah, check your Facebook, okay? You're talking about me intimidating, you're intimidating a lot, okay? So, yeah. So don't look at me like that, Joyce. Yes, don't look at me like that. You know, you know, you know what you're doing. You know what you're doing. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Joyce, please. Mr. Shi.
Where is the evidence of that?
Mr. Shi, please. Mr. Patel, please.
Don't engage with her. Why do we even engage with her? She doesn't do anything.
Mr. Patel. Mr. Fagan and Ms. Conway next.
She asked me the question. I answered the question. I'm entitled to respond to that. She making things up.
Public comment time, please. Respect the public. Thank you. Mr. Fagan.
Good evening. Nick Fagan, 42 Edgewood Road. It's a little early to have election silly season, but apparently we've entered election silly season. And I don't usually agree with Mr. Patel, but I think it's Mr. Patel, right? But he was absolutely right. Come on, guys. I came here, and you saw me coming late, because I couldn't stand what I was seeing at home. This is ridiculous, the two hours that you spent in the beginning of the meeting. So I'll get off of it, but get it together, guys. The, so here's the things that I came to talk to you about. Dr. Bragan, the residents or the parents are, have a little bit of PTSD because of what's happened in transportation over the last two years. We haven't had stability in that department. I have the opinion that we don't have stability in that department as we've changed. I believe we had another staffing change just recently, right? We lost our transportation who was only there for a year, or less than a year. So the, when you say that we think we got it and we thought we had it last year too, right? And the vendor surprised the administration with a last-minute, well, we don't have any of our drivers. So I would like you to comment, please, to give us some confidence in what you're doing differently this year to make sure that we're not surprised by our vendors and just, you know, dog eat our homework on that. The other thing I would, I'd like to ask for you is, and I'm sorry I haven't been at the last couple of meetings, but I don't think I've heard much about the capital improvement plan, other than the bond attorney and all that stuff. But we need to get moving. The-
We discussed it.
Okay. So I'll go back and watch the tapes again, but let's get the money out of the coffers. Let's get the plans from DMR and whoever, USA or whoever the other architect are, and let's go. Let's be done, because you're going to be on another election cycle here soon. You're going to be in the next term. You're going to have new people and we're going to restart all over again. So we need to go. And I'm a little impatient and the rest of the residents are a little impatient and we need to get going on that. Two more things. It's been three months as of tomorrow since Uvalde. And I would like for the board, without, and maybe you have in the last couple of meetings, but without revealing confidential security protocols or measures, or can you give us some confidence as residents, as students, as parents, as to the safety and security measures that are being done in response to things that have been learned in the Texas shooting? And give us some confidence that we are a safe, secure district and that me sending my kindergartner for the first time is a safe thing to do because I'm concerned about that to make sure that he isn't murdered at school, which is what's happened a couple of times here in this nation. The last thing that I wanted to add was through the efforts of grassroots efforts of residents, the Charlie Brown's plan was recently, was changed so that students can't live in that, those, the thing that was built or the thing that's going to get built, the duplexes or townhouses or whatever you want to call them. It's going to council for an appeal. We'll see what happens with that process. But if it does get passed, what you have as a board and as an administration is you have a deed restriction. You have a deed restriction that says 19-year-old, below 19-year-olds cannot live in that property. And so what I want you to take to heart and take to the administration and the enrollment department is I need you to think about how that's going to play out when the first person that lives in those duplexes comes to the enrollment department and tries to enroll. Matutian does not allow that to happen from Ayers Court. Ayers Court is Whitmere or Whitmore. They have a residency just the same. They have the same deed restriction. The school district there does not allow folks to register. I want Edison to make sure that you do not allow students to ever register from that property because it's agreed to as a deed restriction and we need to hold the line on attendance and it goes back to some of the residency verification things. And I don't think we've seen that here in Edison where this 19-year-old restriction. So I want you just to be aware of it and be holding the enrollment department accountable to administer that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. I agree with you on that strongly. I also-
Board President, can I-
Mr. Patel.
Mr. Fagan, when you were in the board meeting, the council meeting in regards to this whole Charlie Brown townhome issues, did you bring up to Joyce or any other council members in regards to the impact that's going to have in our schools and if they're cutting it down to seven or 10 houses, whatever it is that they're saying, are you telling them to put some type, some type of restrictions on maybe making it a seniors home where there's no kids that they're going to have there? I understand you coming in here and telling us that, you know what, can you do this, can you do that? But the people that are approving those homes and giving the permits out are the ones that are in the township. I suggest that they listen to you and do the job that they're supposed to do and appoint the right peoples that they don't work on overcrowding our schools here. That's what I would suggest to do. And we'll put the restrictions here, but we'll do it on our side as well. But that starts there first before they issue out those permits.
With all that said, I agree with you that it would be, it would be very smart of us to make sure that nobody registers from those townhomes. And that's a good point and I appreciate that duplexes. At the end, yes. Dr. Bragan?
Just on some of those things, Mr. Fagan, regarding transportation, I do think we have contingencies in place. Should a vendor drop some routes, if somebody drops 50 routes two days before school, I can't plan for that. I don't have that many resources waiting around. That wouldn't be a wise use of our facilities or our monies. But I am confident that we have the right people in the right place to be successful and we're prepared for some issues that may present themselves. And I don't think that's going to happen again, but can I guarantee it? No. I can't guarantee the sun's coming up tomorrow, but I'm counting on it. And perhaps we'll be here to see it as things go on. But, and there has been some transition there in the transportation department and we had a supervisor there I thought was doing a nice job and he decided to take another job in a different district. It happens. I think we got the right people in the right place and we're working with them to move forward and make it better than it was last year. So yeah, my commitment on that. Regarding the capital, we're really doing a lot on that. Even on the agenda tonight was the approval of two resolutions to submit the plans to the DOE for approval, which is, we have to get that before we can go out to bid. So I think this board's actually moving pretty fast. And like you, Mr. Fagan, it's never fast enough because I get a sense of urgency. One of those reasons is I'm 57 and I got more life in the rearview mirror than the windscreen. But also our kids are waiting for us, right? And we don't have time to waste. So I think, I think the board has done a nice job in trying to move that forward. And I do send out that superintendent's newsletter, Superintendent's Corner. I hope you got a chance to look at it. I've been trying to keep up to date. I'll make sure I send you one directly tomorrow with our capital improvements. And regarding school safety and security, after Uvalde, we all were very upset by that and what happened. And the initial responses were that somebody propped open a door and let people in and they had the security. I'm not exactly sure what happened because we don't have all the information, but working with Pat Cassan who's over there and our relationship with our police department, we do have an extensive security plan, limited access to the building. Everyone that comes in, that gets buzzed in is appropriate to be there, gets screened with our Raptor system. We have an armed security guard in every building. We have unarmed people in other buildings. We have police SROs at our high schools and we're looking to expand them to our middle schools as well for this year. So we're pretty confident we have a really good plan, not to mention all our drills that we do. Again, unfortunately, the world we live in, if somebody's motivated to harm somebody and they don't care about their own life, they could kill the president. So I can't guarantee anybody's safety, but I can tell you, I can guarantee you that we're doing all we can to make it as safe as possible and make all of our schools targets that people look at and say, hey, you know what? Not there. That's not an easy target. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Ms. Conway, then Ms. Orchid, then Mr. Ross.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle. Just to answer your question, Mr. Patel, that group is in the process of addressing the issue with the council and that is going on. And I believe Mr. Fagan was just reaching out, taking the time to reach out to you guys. But that's already, I've been going to those meetings and they have been reaching out. I just wanted to let you know. But I'm not here for that. Number one, starting in September, we're supposed to have high school representatives sit on the dais for the Board of Education so this way they can enlighten the district as to the goings-on at the two high schools. And I did ask Mr. Ross if he was prepared to have a student come to the meeting. And I just want to make sure that that will take place because I always thought that was very beneficial. Number two is something that I'll never stop asking about, the Lincoln update. So if I could get something on that after my time is up. And the other thing is the kindergarten numbers. I know you were hoping that you would reach a certain number and you had a certain number. I was wondering at this time, what is that number up to? And you brought up an idea that I had asked for a number of years ago. And because you asked, Beninda, sorry, a question, I always thought that it was a good idea to have your directors and supervisors here so that if- so that if a question came up, they would be ready and willing to answer, rather than playing the email or telephone game to get an answer. So if that's something, Mr. President, you could look to initiate, I would appreciate that. It was done away with years ago. But you've got a valuable group here, I think you should utilize them and help the public at the same time. The next thing is, do you have enough teachers? I know they keep talking about on the television and the radio that we're lacking in teachers, and the numbers are down. And as a former special ed teacher, I, I realize how moving them around from place to place takes place every year. And I was just wondering if you feel secure enough to have all teachers and faculty and staff in place starting this year? You did mention to one point that you're still looking for more, but is that to enhance, or is that to secure need? And the other idea, see, you should have called me up earlier, because as I sit there, I think of more. When we talk about security, initially, I was involved with Mrs. Ward, who brilliantly brought in the program of security guards in our own schools. And we wound up with security guards and security officers. And at this time, can you actually tell me that we have enough staff? Because on the personnel list, I see comings and goings. Do we still have enough security guards and enough security officers to put the district parents in a more secure place? And not only us, but even the staff? Because the world is getting scary, and I would not like to see a decrease in either security guards or security officers. We need them more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conway. To answer some of your questions before I turn it to Dr. Bregan, the first one, the students on the Board of Education, the policy committee has recommended to have one, the state statute actually says, if you have more than one high school in your district, you could choose one and do a rotation. The recommendation is to use one student from each high school, so there would always be two additional students up here with us. Obviously, nonvoting. That's a state mandate, but it's something that we're very excited about. It was within our policy revisions that we published tonight on our first meeting, or reading. Lincoln update, Dr. Bregan will do kindergarten enrollment. Teachers, we're in good shape, that's what I was thanking Dr. Alterelli for before. And him and his team have done a great job. It seems like we're in good shape. And security-wise, something I wanted to mention when, when Mr. Fagan mentioned it, was you'll see in the news, I'll see on NJ.com every once in a while, a news article that a district is introducing armed security guards to all their schools. And that's a news item, because they hadn't done that before. As you alluded to, we had been ahead of the game with that. And when you go into our schools, there's, there is armed security in all of the schools, which is nice. But, Dr. Bregan, enrollment? There is, yeah.
For the Lincoln update, we are scheduled, I'm doing an onsite visit tomorrow with Mr. Kalibas. Do some final walkthroughs, but they have the 10 classrooms ready to go. So that's where we're working, they're working around the clock to make sure that happens. As we said, for a couple of months now, the multipurpose room in gym won't be ready to go for a period of time. But the classrooms should be open, ready to go for September 1, and we're counting on that. Kindergarten numbers, we predicted 1150 was the number we were working with for the overall number of kindergarten students, age five, that would be coming full-day kindergarten. As of this morning, it was about 1,050. So we actually have 100 more to go from what our projection was. And we think that's somewhat stable now, as we approach, you know, less than two weeks before school starts. Regarding security, our numbers are 19 to 20 armed guards and about 18 unarmed. That's pretty been consistent since I've been here, it's about the same amount of numbers. We have moved people around to be more efficient. But the overall number of around 40 armed and unarmed security guards has been consistent. So I think we're well-staffed. And again, we got an excellent person in Pat Cassan overseeing that. So I trust his judgment and his allocation of resources in that regard. Thank you.
Ms. Orchid?
Hi, Maria Orchid, 83, Jefferson. We're going to have a cleanup on Silver Lake. We need volunteers on Friday, August 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30. It's on Lakeview Boulevard. Appreciate if anybody can give assistance. Schools will open September 6th, so please be careful driving. And thank you for working on the traffic patterns. I'd like to say thank you for those who came to the community, Edison Community Gardens. They did have an open house, I think it was on Sunday. The official opening was, I believe, Tuesday. And last plays in the park will have a free concert on September 5th at 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Orchid. Mr. Ross?
Good evening, everyone. I stepped outside to put some quarters in the parking meter, because it was, just didn't want to get a ticket. And, and I heard somebody brought up one of my favorite things, which is the rivalry between J.P. Stevens and Edison High. And I just want to shout out to everybody that September 2nd, at 7:00 p.m., we're going to have our annual clash, it's going to be at the Matthew J. Drawl Stadium. And in all seriousness, I had mentioned that Mr. McGuigan, you know, one of our best teachers, you know, he, he had as a principal, Ms. Polakowski. And one of the great things about Edison is, is the young people like Kushi here today. And the young people that were my students and Ms. Polakowski's students that we saw at the new teacher orientation. And the people that choose to come back, like President Snyder said to Kushi, please stay in Edison. The number of people that do, people like Dr. Bregan, who come back and, you know, go through the public schools, know how good it is and stay. And while a couple of years ago, Mr. McGuigan, a Hawk, was the, you know, the teacher of the year for the Eagles, you know, this year, an Eagle was a teacher of the year for the Hawks. And it was another school, another one of the Edison graduates was one of the teachers of the year. So that competition, I think, and rivalry is something fun, and it gets the kids just to bring out the best of them. And you'll see just how wonderful our students are, and just how much they can excel. And, you know, we win some things, they win some things, but September 2nd. And if you're down the shore, and you want, if you're down, say, like that Atlantic City, Atlantic, you know, way down, like Atlantic City, Ocean City, Cape May, Wildwood, on Sunday at 5:00 p.m., we're going to be at the Battle at the Shore at Ocean City High School at 5:00 p.m. We're going to be playing Cedar Ridge, we're going all the way down, it's like exit 30 on the Parkway. If you see me or Mr. Sandell, we'll spot you a ticket to get into that game. That's where we're opening up the season for Week Zero. So again, J.P. Stevens, the second, and the band show is on the 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Just so you know, you have four minutes remaining, if you want to use them. I would love to have a place that I can go and see the schedule of events for Edison High School and J.P. Stevens. And really, like a comprehensive, like, go ahead. Yeah, so if anybody at home couldn't hear, they're, they're setting up a week at a glance, month at a glance. And Mr. Ross will be diligent in making sure we all know when to show up, so we could cheer on our students. Perfect. Mr. Revnek?
I was going to say good evening, but I'm going to say good night. Matt Revnek, ETA Vice President and J.P. Stevens teacher. First of all, I'd like to welcome, on behalf of the Association and myself, Mr. Toth as the new business administrator. You're replacing a legend in Mr. Mashad, who was here forever. Very well-respected, not only here in Edison, but around the state. And I wish you the same respect and longevity and success that Mr. Mashad had. It'll be interesting, as I met you in the hallway, I'm the numbers person for the Association, so I'm sure we'll be working a lot together, and I look forward to it. Couple of things I just wanted to mention. You know, one of the things we just sort of alluded to, even by Mr. Ross, is about the new teachers yesterday, and they started the orientation for the new teachers. And I know I personally enjoy attending it, Mr. Bowden invites some of our executive board to come. And to see the sparkle in the eyes of the new teachers is very great to see. But I also want to mention, that also includes us senior teachers. You know, I walked in as a student teacher, it'll be 34 years ago on September 1st, and I haven't left J.P. Stevens since. And every year, I look forward to going back and starting a new year. In fact, I was on this morning, Genesis, to see my roster of students that was up, you know, take a look at the kids I know and those that I didn't know, et cetera. You know, I'll be starting to set up like my Google Classroom and stuff like that. So that's one thing teachers look forward to, and that's the beginning of a new year and a fresh start. That's one of the reasons why I took exception a little bit to the person that spoke before. We have some of the hardest-working teachers, and I've been there for 34 years, and I'm proud of the colleagues that I've worked with. Not only at J.P. Stevens, but I know as a, the Association, one of the Association leaders, just like the administration, Mr. Bowden, I get out in the buildings at times and walk around and see what's going on. And I got to say, you know, whether it be the kindergarten teacher that's on the floor, Dr. Merri, who just retired 50-some years in the district, that was still with her kindergarten, is on the floor on a daily basis, to myself to teach his AP Calculus at J.P. Stevens, I'm there at 6:30 in the morning. Many times, I had Shivi's daughter, for example, this past year, for help in the morning before school, during my free periods, after school. This is what we do. And the teachers that come to Edison are very dedicated, they go through a very difficult process to get hired there. Dr. Bregan alluded to it yesterday, you know, and they do accept what they consider to be the best. So if there's a problem with an individual teacher or concern, please don't bash everyone. Reach out to the, to teacher themselves, the supervisor, the principal, there's a chain of command there. And I guarantee you, if there is a situation, it'll be remedied. But you're talking about a district that the teachers are very, very dedicated, we do what's in the best interest. I'll give an example, I ran into some kids after yesterday morning, we went out for brunch, a few of us. And four students that I had during the pandemic, that I never even got to see in person, happened to pop in. They recognized me immediately, they took a picture, they sent it to me on my emails this morning. And we just talked for a few minutes, you know, and it was wonderful. You know, and this, this is what we do as teachers. So we are very dedicated and committed, and, you know, that's what it's about. We're always there for the kids. In terms of the sex ed curriculum, I mean, that was a fiasco. It really was. First of all, your, your resolution was like totally incorrect. The resolution should have been that the board is going to charge a superintendent and/or the board attorney to construct a letter that upon board approval will be submitted to the state of New Jersey. That's not what it said. You can't, you know, instruct a letter to go that hasn't been written yet. It just doesn't make sense. You know, it's funny, because Jerry Campione is a parliamentarian, and we're sitting there and saying parliamentary procedure and Robert Rules of Order doesn't even exist here. It's like a free-for-all. If you're going to run a meeting, it should be done appropriately. Dr. Bregan, I, I got to agree with you what you said. I have two daughters that are a little older than yours. I looked at the curriculums, and I agree with you. There's nothing near that would disturb me at all. You know, it's funny, because we were sitting back there, again, when we were children, and even when I first started teaching for probably half my career, the parents did not have access to things that they have nowadays. You know, everything is online, you can go right on the website and see everything you want in terms of curriculums and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, the policies, everything's there. You know, we didn't have that. We entrusted the teachers and the administrators and the educators, because they were the experts. You know, and that's been taken out of our hands to an extent. So, you know, I, I do appreciate community involvement and community say, but I think you have to trust the professionals that are doing the job for you. There are no changes from 2020. We were looking it up, as you guys were arguing over it. As Dr. Bregan again mentioned, they give you a couple of years to implement when changes are enacted. And that's what the changes are. It's nothing new, it's two years later now, and with the pandemic especially, things were, a little grace period was given to enact the policies that were instilled. And I don't know of anyone that really should be violating what, as Dr. Bregan mentioned again, what the State Board of Education puts out. They determine the curriculum, right or wrong, whether you agree or disagree with the legislators, because they're not education people either. And that's why if you do have an issue, you go through them. That's not a Board of Education issue.
Thank you, Mr. Revnek.
And by the way, in closing, Yankees won 4-2, if anybody wants to know.
Thank you. Well, Jerry, next time we get into a discussion, you can trade seats with me. Since you're an expert on.
For President?
Mr. Shi?
I think that during the COVID, we passed a resolution. It's the same way that, similar to what we're doing here. And I didn't see you guys coming over and talk about it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment, first-time public comment? Anybody that has spoken, that has time left, that wants to speak? Ms. Shefali Patel? You have two minutes, can you put two minutes on the clock for me?
I don't think I need that much time, it's a quick question. So in regards to the transportation issue, I just have a question about how parents are contacted regarding late bus pickup and any issues regarding the bus timings? Because I don't know if you're aware, but last year, my son, his bus picked him up at school pretty late, and he didn't get home till 5 o'clock. And I called the school twice. And they told me that they had to reach out to transportation. So the second time I called, she said the bus should be there. And my son has a phone, and I was calling him, and he was telling me the bus driver didn't know where he was going, and was going in circles. And when he got off the bus, he told me, Mom, I thought we were getting kidnapped. So that's just a question I have in regards to the busing situation, especially when there's new drivers, they don't really know the area. How is that information sent out to the parents in a timely manner, so we don't have to wait at a bus stop for an hour and a half for our kids?
Is that the only one?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Patel.
Each of our building principals should be getting a list with all the bus routes, with all the students on it, that they should be able to quickly access on Genesis and do a robo-call and say, hey, route so-and-so is coming 15 minutes late, please be aware, or it's been delayed, that should happen. I'll review that with the principals, and if there's an issue with it moving forward, we'll address it. So if you ever have that situation again, or sometimes there's, you don't meet with satisfaction in your inquiries, email me directly. You're welcome.
Ms. Anita? Forty, one minute, one minute, please.
Yeah, I just want to add one point. Dr. Bregan said that I was disrespectful when I said what I did about teachers not pulling their weight in my earlier talk. I only said what I did based on the information that I received, and I have it in writing, that the issue with class, with class size was that while language teachers were forced to juggle almost 200 students over a two-day rotation, which was very difficult for the teachers. I have this in writing. And my opinion was based on what I received. If that's not right, then you guys need to get your stories right and give us answers that we can understand, like plain English. We're not the subject matter experts here. You need to speak to the layperson in, in simple terms that we can understand and appreciate. And that's not happening. Everybody is giving a different answer, and none of it seems convincing. At this point, we only believe that, and I agree, that instruction time may not have come down, but the lap time.
Thank you very much.
In answer to your question, as Harry Truman said, the buck stops with me. So we will have a conversation, and I will give you all the information as accurately as I possibly can.
Ms. Joyce? Three minutes and 30 seconds, please.
Let me start off with, I get tired of people playing the race game and the discrimination game, and that it really will, if you really actually want to know what's considered that way, I think you need to go to the Holocaust Museum or the African-American Museum. Then, then you'll know what discrimination is. It isn't behind some little game that you play during the day. Now, if you sign a paper saying that for permit, that you have six months, and you're paying 47 games a weekend, majority of people are not even from Edison, the taxpayers, why should you intimidate the people who have to enforce the rules? That's the part I don't get from Mr. Shi. He can say these games that he wants, whatever, but I can't say, because you can't play dodgeball tomorrow, that you're discriminating against me, because you can't play, you know, I mean, the rules. the rules and stuff are written within the paperwork for you to do. You can't just change rules anytime you want to. I, I know it's, a lot of people like to play political games, they figure that they'll play to the crowd, and that's how they get the information. But I, I don't play those political games. I'm not a rubber stamp. I have my own mind. I do things the proper way that should be done. I don't go around denigrating people because they don't agree with something that I believe in. And I've always taught, for the 40 years I've been in education, I've always taught my students all the time, you do not have to put somebody down to lift yourself up, because if you do, then there's something internally wrong with you. And each day that you get up, every morning, and the first thing you can do is think about throwing rocks at me, you know, it's okay, but don't throw rocks at my child, okay? She has nothing to do with it, just like he stated from the beginning. I don't, I don't care what happened five years ago. We're going by what happened this year. We're going by our new president, we're going by the superintendent. These are the rules and the records we are going by, in reference to the Sharks or in reference to cricket, okay? I, I seen it where it really disturbed me, that we spent one time, like, five hours talking about cricket in an education meeting. And everybody comes up now and they complain, oh, we cut this lab, we cut that lab. Why didn't you spend that time and that energy discussing education and the places that we need to go? No, you didn't. You spent all that time, because I've been at the different meetings. Do not talk while I'm speaking. Do not talk while I'm speaking.
Mr. Patel, please.
Okay?
Bringing up cricket.
At all, you know what I mean? So, as, as, I, I forget that they're, like, grown-up children and, you know, the way they are, they have no respect for any, no respect for anybody, so that means they don't have respect for their self. When you go around disrespecting people, you have none for yourself, believe me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For President.
For the record, you brought up cricket. For the record, we did discuss about the labs and education back in March of February.
Don't walk away, Joyce. Come on, stay.
Oh, listen.
Mr. Patel, Mr. Shi, we have, any more public comment?
I, I'd like to respond. For President.
Make it quick, please.
So, here's a letter from Patty Timman to Dr. Bregan on July 5th. Good afternoon. Five years ago, I was instructed by Damashad and Dr. O'Malley not to charge Will Thomas for field usage. Mr. Thomas works for the township and maintains the field across from J.P. Stevens High School for our JV softball team as needed. I spoke to Kathy McKay, who has confirmed the work that Mr. Thomas does in the field. So, it says, it shows that for the past five years, we have not been charging the Shark Football Team for the field usage. And Joyce just walked away, because she's, she's a coward, okay? She put on her Facebook, excuse me...
Mr. Shi, Mr. Shi.
Well, if she can call me, I can call her. So, she's a councilwoman, she should know better, okay? Council Vice President. So, she put on her Facebook, she's going to have a class-section lawsuit against the school district for the Shark Football Team paying to, to play, for the, in the field, but they have not been paying for it. So, I like to challenge...
Mr. Shi, I just want to...
No, 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 let me finish.
No.
I like to challenge Mr. Ship Freeman to bring the lawsuit on. Thank you.
I hope that makes you feel better. They just played this month, and they paid, just for the record?
Well, I'm saying before...
And that happened?
I'm saying before, I have an email.
Mr. Fagan, you have 45 seconds, please.
Two things. Thank you for answering our questions. You guys do do a nice job. I, I do appreciate, Dr. Bregan, and, and when you, when we answer questions, ask questions, you guys do answer them. The other thing, I just, just for clarity, just what's going on with the zoning board case? The Edison Township Council has 95 days to decide on whether they are going to appeal or even hear the appeal, and then make a decision. That 95-day clock started on June 29th, and so by, I think that's November 1st, they need to make a decision on this case. If they don't hear it at all, it will just accept. They can pocket veto by just, by not hearing it, or they can remand back to the zoning board, they can approve, or they can completely reject, or they can do anything they want.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
So, it becomes back in the zoning, it has nothing to do with you guys, just wanted you to know.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
Yep.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, ah, Mr. Manish? You have two minutes, sir. Two minutes on the clock?
I'll take less than that. Listen, Jerry, you and I and all agree, when we stand as a candidate, you know we're going to get abused when we sit behind the board. If somebody said something we don't have a right, or you don't have a right, to tell a public or insult public, just answer the question nicely. No insult, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. That's it.[1785.83]